Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this committee of the whole meeting to order here at 6:00 PM in council chambers. I believe we do not have any remote electronic attendance. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So we'll start with our oath of office for promotional appointment of Eric Becker to the rank of Fire Lieutenant effective July 2nd, 2022.
Thank you, Your Honor and council. This evening, we're here to celebrate the promotion to the rank of Lieutenant for currently engineer Eric Becker. Eric joined our fire department on January 28th of 2008. He was subsequently appointed to the rank of engineer on November 10th of 2018. And as the mayor stated, he will assume the rank of lieutenant on July 2nd. Eric is a certified hazardous materials technician and as such, he serves not only the residents of Moline, but also the greater Quad City region as a member of the Mavis Division 43's hazardous materials response team. So we're quite proud of Eric and his accomplishments in the world of hazmat. He is joined this evening by his wife Charity, his mother Laura, his mother-in-law Vicki, and his children Kobe, Hope Lynn, and Ezzy.
Sir.
Your Honor.
Great. Would you mind coming up here? And we'll do it here in your family.
Absolutely.
You raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Eric Becker.
I, Eric Becker.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of lieutenant.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of lieutenant.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department of the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And I will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of lieutenant.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of lieutenant.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department of the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And I think you'll want a picture? Yes?
Please.
Down there is fine, up here is fine, wherever you.
To Waldron's defense, he did turn around and give a hand shake.
So you're Went.
Uh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. The names.
I'm not lacking something else, are you?
Yeah.
Hey, cool.
Then we switched that around.
Huge upgrade.
Okay.
They okayed that change in '69.
We're on to item number four, board appointments. Mayor's appointment of John Wessel to the revolving loan fund board for a full five-year term to expire June 30th, 2027. Next item is a proclamation. A request from the Director of Parks and Recreation to declare July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas, parks and recreation facilities and programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Moline; and whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designated to promote active lifestyles; and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region; and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve our water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development and produce habitat for wildlife; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month; and whereas Moline recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation's resources, now therefore I, Sangeetha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim July 2022 as Park and Recreation Month." Congratulations and thank you for all you do. Mr. Griffith, if you have a few words?
Yeah, just a little background. So the National Parks and Recreation Association has been celebrating July as National Parks and Recreation Month since 1985. The U.S. House of Representatives actually passed it in 2009, which the mayor said. We've got a lot of great things going on. We've got a lot of new programs going on this summer. Walk by Riverside, Ben Butterworth Parkway, a lot of the other parks. There's a lot of people out enjoying everything that Moline has to offer. So it's just a great month and we look forward to, you know, continued progress with our parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Thanks, sir. Is there any public comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to questions on the agenda. Seeing none, we move to our agenda items. 8.1, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an agreement between the city of Moline and the Board of Education of Moline Cove Valley School District Number 40, setting forth the terms for reassignment of four police liaison officers to Moline schools for the 2022-2023 school year. Mr. Vitas?
Yeah, very briefly, the school board has already approved the agreement for 2022-2023. And as you can see specifically, it's a continuation of an existing program, longstanding program. And the fiscal impact identified was $581,108, which is the full rate for salary and benefits for those four officers. And 40% of that gets reimbursed by the school board or school district in the amount of $232,443. And we recommend approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I had to do one tonight.
Alderman Timian and seconded by Alderman Went. Need discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item 8.2, a resolution approving a sole-source contract with Rex Road Sound for the Sesquicentennial Celebration Stage and Sound System for the amount of $69,726.40.
As you know, mayor and council, we have our Sesquicentennial Celebration scheduled for the last week of August this year. So we're about two months away from the celebration itself. Rex Road is the sole source here in the Quad City region. And we're recommending approval of this contract so that they can provide for the stage, the lighting, and all the other things that are contained in the contract for those three days.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Went. Discussion? Mr. Went?
This also comes with them being recognized as one of the major sponsors as well.
Rex Road? No, I don't believe Rex Road is a sponsor.
I thought they were on the list.
Were they on the list?
Yeah, that was my, I mean, usually a vendor that we're paying this kind of money to, unless they're giving us some significant discount or something doesn't also get the.
We can take, if it's not already listed there, we'll take it back to the committee and.
I'm not, no, they're listed. Either one way or another, I just want a clarification.
Yeah. It could be. Yeah, I mean, at this stage of the game, we release the names of all the sponsors.
Fully sponsored.
I think it was last week we released all of them.
No, it was just today.
Yesterday.
Or yesterday.
Yesterday. So we released the names of all the sponsors yesterday, which basically filled up all the sponsorships. And we raised, I believe it was $150,000.
Was everything $10,000 and over?
Uh, no, there were some smaller ones too. It was a mixture, it's a blend of contributions.
Because I talked to Tori and he said that, because I had been trying to do a sponsorship for a while and they said, oh, don't worry, this is only $10,000.
I mean, they're still accepting sponsorships, I believe.
Yeah, and that's what he said for some of the smaller ones that weren't.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand what's going on.
Okay.
We'll take it back up with Tori and just check on it.
I'll have Tori send an email out that'll just define, you know, where we're at with the sponsorships and what's going on and what the contributions were.
You saw it on the list?
Yeah.
Thank you for looking it up for us.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.3, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an amendment to the funding agreement between the city of Moline and the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the city's participation in the trust fund single-family rehabilitation program Round Three with roof-only repair and disaster contingency award, and do all things necessary to implement said program requirements. Mr. Vitas?
Yes, mayor and council, what we're looking for really is approval for the extension that Ida is providing through December 31st of 2022. It's an existing program.
Thank you.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Macias. Discussion? Yes.
I just want to ask a question of clarification. So with that, this is a state program that we're participating in and they basically just, there's more money available and that's the most likely reason why they're extending? Am I understanding that correctly?
One of the reasons that they're extending it is due to, everybody was slow, low on program. Now we're all catching up. We didn't want to spend that money. In Round Three, we received about $400,000 and that covers still this Moline, Moline. So we have a lot of spots and they would open up right now. We have 110, 150, we're taking it. So.
Thank you.
Please make sure, Mr. Vitas, that we are able to coordinate advertising of that availability well. I mean, we generally do, but just a reminder. Okay, anything further? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.4, resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase a 2022 John Deere Mach 1 XL Medic utility vehicle from International Automated Systems Incorporated from Balden, Wisconsin in the amount of $53,624.84 utilizing General Services Administration Contract Number GS07F0479N. Mr. Vitas?
Mayor and council, what we're looking for is approval of this purchase of this particular item based upon the responsibilities that both the city of Moline as well as the city of Bettendorf have relative to the pedestrian and bicycle path across the Mississippi on the I-74 Bridge. If we learned anything from the incident that took place, the unfortunate incident took place, it's very difficult to be, to respond, given the location and given the nature of that incident. And we have to have the ability to have mobility to get up and on the bridge in the event that Bettendorf can't. So aside from that, we can use this for other purposes here in the city during major events that are taking place downtown, whether it's the marathon or whether it's Sesquicentennial. It just basically supplements our ambulance, EMT, paramedic services.
Thank you.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Timian. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
So I think that with the needs particularly related to the I-74 Bridge path and our coming events, I think this is something that we need to move forward on now. But I do think there's a larger conversation, I want to have it for a couple of agenda items, and this is the first one that touches on. Because this is looking at using a reallocation of ARPA funding. And my concern is if we bring it forward, a lot of items are reallocating ARPA funding prior to identifying in our budgeting process what that funding available actually is and looks like that we had discussed a couple of weeks ago. So while I am fine moving forward with this one, because I think there's an immediate need, I am hesitant to do much looking at that. I'm wondering if there's a thought or justification behind looking at that on several items tonight.
Oh, I think, I think the best answer to that is that, you know, this need presented itself. This was not something, for example, that was necessarily in the plans.
Right.
It had not been requested during the budgeting process. It's not even a part of the long-term capital equipment replacement schedule because it wasn't contemplated. You know, it arose. And then the funding source for it, of course, I mean, there are reserves that could be used, but there's obviously a lot of ARPA dollars that have to be spent before 2026. And there are those dollars which remain unallocated. And that's the reason for the recommendation.
Are you requesting some sort of report from our finding director about where we're at with the unallocated, what's left over, et cetera?
When we brought that up, it was at our last work session meeting. We said we would have that as we were heading into the budgeting process. So we know that is coming.
Right.
My statement is just concern, and I think this is one we need to move forward on. And I think your answer makes me comfortable with the funding source for this one. But it is, I'm hesitant to do too much down that path.
Thank you. Anything further? Yes, Mr. Went?
Well, and to your point, I mean, this is one of the complaints I've been talking about forever. It is the piece of pie or the marshmallow right now, we keep eating, but we haven't had a discussion on what are all the things? Because we're going to, at some point, something's going to come up that we really want to do and we're going to be like, oh, well, we've already spent $90,000, $102,000 there. And all of a sudden, you're talking about some real money that could have done something else. And I'm not against this, I wasn't against the water, you know, but this is what incrementalism, and this is bad government, is doing these little things without actually talking about what is our goals and taking the things and deciding and prioritizing things. Because right now, how the prioritization is coming is whoever asks first. And that just seems to be what's going on. They all sound like great ideas and I'm not against them. But we, as a council, need to have that conversation about what are all of those things so that we can prioritize, because you can't do everything. And so I'm going to support it, but I appreciate your comment and it is spot on. And so that's what I was kind of hoping, and I had a conversation with Alderman Waldron about it, that our prioritization worksheet or work session that we're going through for goal-setting and everything, we didn't get into any of that. I mean, historically, we went through and we decided, hey, these are the five things that we want to do this year. Here's what we're going to allocate funds towards so they can build the budget towards it. But this is kind of the opposite. It's just whatever kind of shows up.
Mr. Went, can I interrupt you so we can stay on track here today? Do you have any further comments on this particular item?
I would like to move that, well, is to direct staff to come back with, have the conversation of all of these things that are going to come back. Show us what each of those things are going to cost so that we can actually have a conversation about what we're prioritizing, not just bringing things in a piecemeal approach.
Thank you.
That's what I'd like to see staff do.
Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.5, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to declare a 1988 Spartan fire truck vehicle identification number 1S9BTODO5JC185888, a city-owned vehicle as surplus property.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Went. Mr. Vitas?
Very self-explanatory, it's how we dispose of surplus property, it's required by ordinance.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Waldron?
Is this, chief, is this a vehicle in use or is this the second alarmers truck? Where is this truck stationed now? Has it already been replaced?
Yeah, this truck is currently at Public Works, has been for over a year. We've, there's frame issues, if I recall. My recollection, it's not usable. It dates back to my first year on the job. So.
But it's been, it's been in fleet for a year?
It's almost a year now. We had to wait, hold on to it because we had some radio issues. We wanted to use the radios that were in it. There were some other equipment that we wanted to strip off it, but we've got that accomplished now, this spring.
Thank you.
Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number 8.6, resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase touchless plumbing fixtures from WW Granger Incorporated in Janesville, Wisconsin in the amount of $92,069.55 utilizing pricing on Sourcewell Contract Number 121218-WWG. Mr. Vitas?
Well, I know where the discussion's going to go, so I'm just going to preface this carefully. The recommendation that's coming from fleet and facilities, from Sarah Mark, this facilities manager, is to replace the fixtures and faucets inside the municipal buildings that we own as well as the park facilities that we own and make them touchless. So that, one, they are more efficient rather than having leaking faucets, which I believe me that we have them. They're around. This would replace all of those fixtures with touchless equipment so that that way it's actually more germ-free. And it keeps in accordance with the water conservation efforts that the mayor was supporting through the Wyland National Mayor's Challenge. And it is recommended that we use the non-restricted ARPA dollars.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman Moyer. Yes, Mr. Waldron?
I think I sent out an email earlier in the week and I talked to Carol about it and I copied you off, Bob. This is a classic case where this would be much more beneficial to use for restricted ARPA funds rather than non-restricted. This goes right to the, what the ARPA funds were for. I'd much prefer us to keep our non-restricted for things that are going to come up that we've already talked about here. So do I need to amend that? Or I'd like to make an amendment to utilize restricted American Rescue Plan dollars.
Second.
Second by Alderman Went. Thank you. Need discussion on that? Yes, Mr. Went?
What was the reasoning that the recommendation was unrestricted? I didn't ask that.
Do you want to answer that, Ms. Barnes?
Was that entirely part of that? But I totally agree with Alderman Waldron that it is appropriate to use restricted funds and good consideration as well.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Went?
If Carol was, how did, I'm just curious how this came about? And we talk about finance and using of monies and the finance department's not involved with it. How did this, what was the genesis of this and how did it wind up on the agenda without it going through finance at all?
Mr. Vitas?
I believe that everything goes through finance that has an impact. I believe Carol was out of town, if I'm not mistaken, when this was presented.
And Sarah and I had talked about restricted ARPA funds. And it just got through the council being like restricted. And it really, I mean, I would recommend that it should have been restricted.
So to recap.
I apologize that we didn't get that included.
Thank you. So to be clear, you agree that restricted is appropriate? And you did have conversation with the person proposing this as it went through the process in Granicus? Prior to that? Yeah, oops, sorry.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, this is of the restricted amendment.
Yes, you have the amendment.
Sorry, I should have said that first. All those in favor, one more time?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. We're back to the original motion. Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I think this is something that can make a lot of sense. I am not feeling that it is an urgent need or something we should address before we get to the budgeting process. I think it's just something that we need to sit and wait, unless there's a statement that says, no, there's a reason not to wait. But I.
I mean, it's just a question of timing. I mean, if the council wanted to defer it, council could defer it. Ultimately, the recommendation will still come forward. And at that point, the council would be faced with that decision in terms of the use of the ARPA funds. Because as we know, you know, a lot has changed since last summer when we did our allocation. And because of what's taken place, you know, economically in the country and the impact that's had on all of our contracts, we're going to be revisiting all of the ARPA allocations. And we're going to be revisiting, not only that, we're going to be revisiting our revenues from the 2021 audit, which are going to actually end up in changing the balance of the restricted versus the non-restricted. So that's a process that we haven't even begun yet, but that is going to, that's going to start happening soon.
I'd like to make a motion to table the item, intending to bring it back to the table after we've had a chance to review what the available ARPA funding.
Second.
Okay, motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Williams. All those in, do I need to do a roll call for a table?
No.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, and now I'll do a roll call. Please. Alderman O'Brien?
Nay.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
Moyer?
Nay.
Five ayes, three nays? Okay, the tabling passes.
Your Honor.
Yes.
This is a question about this, but it isn't about the tabling motion.
Okay.
The $92,000 sounds like a lot of money and it will go quickly for plumbing facilities. I'm interested to know if that number, when it comes back, includes installation or not? Because it doesn't talk about installation here on, if it, because installation could be significant. Are we doing it in-house with our plumbing people, which might not be legal? Or are we contracting out and is that an additional cost? That would be information to have before we go.
Mr. Doyt, you can jot that down as an item to definitely follow back up with us. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to 8.7, resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase two grappler attachments for a backhoe loader from Martin Equipment in Rock Island, Illinois for the amount of $28,190. Mr. Vitas?
It's budgeted and we're recommending replacement of the equipment.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Timian. It's not a race. Every second we can save.
Watching the clock.
Just kidding. So we have a motion for discussion. I'm just very thankful it looks, if I'm reading this correctly, it's come in lower than the, lower than.
For a change, something came in lower.
Yeah, for a change, let's celebrate, one item.
We should celebrate a win.
All right, thank you.
Hasn't been customary to see things come in under budget.
Correct. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to our informationals. 9.1, park and recreation volunteer information. Mr. Griffith?
Yes, so I'm going to go through the three programs that we currently have in the Parks and Recreation Department and then Margaret's going to kind of talk about the union stance and the legal kind of aspect of it. So the first project program that we have is the Adopt a Park. So we've got several parks in the community that are adopted by different organizations. We ask that they clean up the park at least three times a year, spring, summer, fall. Staff coordinates with them for garbage bags, the little grabbers for garbage and whatnot. We coordinate with them to, where to put the bags to pick them up. So we've got several parks that are adopted. We also have the Garden Guardian Program. So that's the group that takes care of the flower areas down on Ben Butterworth Parkway. There are 17 locations throughout that. And there's about 50 to 75 people that take care of those throughout the year. We do provide them with mulch and some tools and gloves and, you know, kind of help them out whenever they need it. But that's probably one of our biggest, most successful programs that we have. We get tons of people that want to do those every single year and try to help coordinate that. And then the last one is the Friends of Riverside Park Gardens. They take care of the greenhouse and the gardens there, they do flower sales. They do plant sales throughout the year and they also partner with us on programming for, like, flower classes and whatnot. We also do work with groups and individuals. So the information that was talked about last week or two weeks ago, the information on the website kind of talks about what they can and cannot do. They reach out to us, we work with them on what they'd like to do. They reach out to us, we work with them on what they'd like to do. Like, like I said, we worked with the Quanis Club. They painted Peterson Park Shelter. Worked on, we supplied a staff member there to make sure they had all the painting supplies and whatnot. But we try to be accommodating as much as possible, and those, those three programs seem to have worked pretty well. And then if anyone does reach out, myself or Greg, who's the park operations manager, will work with them on their idea, need, whatever they would like. So, she'd like to talk about the legal part of it?
Thank you. So, last meeting I raised two issues. One was the unit. So, much of what we were talking about in terms of worked out what'd be done by volunteers is currently, yes, being represented in the whole world. So, I raised the issue about that it would violate our current collective bargaining agreement. After the meeting, I did a little bit of research along that this issue was brought to the attention of me several years ago, when it was brought back at that point, and me asking was not interested in reaching into agreement to allow bargaining unit work to be done by others than the bargaining unit employees. Now, we have not reached out again to ask me, Rob, pending your direction. And also in light of the opinion that we received from our insurance broker, who said, due to liability concerns that IPG or any other insurance period would have, would have been the safety of the volunteers, safety of others in the parks, and liability to the city. Employees of this city are probably trained to use equipment, which would not be the case for volunteers. I would add that there are also probably supervisons. It goes on to say that use of brakes, hand trainers, edgers, and blowers is okay. To use some power equipment, such as chainsaws, mowers, tractors, or any large motorized equipment would be considered dangerous, and a real liability threat to the city. So, we have that consideration to include that.
Yes, Mr. Wentz?
Yeah, so, like, it says trimmers and edgers. Are those just hand mechanized? Or are those gas-powered? Where, where's that line drawn?
So, in the past, we have allowed gas-powered and electric-powered rebockers and edgers.
Okay. But, but, uh, but that's-
I, I would-
Because, because I was told at one point that you couldn't do that, but then, other times, it has been allowed. And so, that's why I just wanna make sure we're clear on what we're talking about.
So, I would like to advise against any power motorized equipment.
So, so to that point, you talked about the, the different things. I mean, I think Fork, they go out every year and clear Sylvan Island, and I know they're using motorized all sorts of stuff. And so, have we prevented them? Is, is, is this now gonna be our policy that we're going to stop them from clearing those trails, or?
I think it's a further discussion that I'm gonna have to have with legal and Bob and the, the park board on it. But I've, I've been told in the past that they only use handsaws, and I've never actually seen them use chainsaws.
You're right.
That's what I was about to say.
It's a very low of hands.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm so-
I mean, it happens all the time. Are there other communities that allow this sort of thing to, where their residents want to help assist and, and move through? Aside from the union issue, which I think would need to be addressed a different way, but-
Yeah. So, I did do a small survey of our park district lines because it was easy. And virtually all of them, you know, volunteer programs. And of those programs, most, if not ninety-nine percent, are almost identical to what's ahead here. So, it's engaged, and that is both unit and non-human, per departments and per facilities. So, your current program is very consistent with what other communities or parks are doing. I would, and then at our roundtable, I think you, Alderman, raised the issue of a volunteer program. And I believe that would be more appropriate to be developed and adopted by your program.
So, at this point, you're, you're saying that one part of it could be worked out in that venue? And, and potentially that other parts through here? Yes, Mr. Wentz?
Yeah, the-
I'm sorry. You know, it's, it's the balance of the employees, the asking for your employees of the city. So, there's, the council is responsible in the, obviously, as with the city, not purpose. The program is actually a forward program. And while it seems to be fairly well-defined and operating, if you're interested in having our developed policy, I believe that would be appropriate to work that to ask the hardcore program. It's a hardcore policy, but a hardcore program.
Sure, Wentz?
Well, in, in, and I understand what you're saying for work that's done within the parks. I, I think that that's a great idea. I've been trying to get a foundation started. There, there's, there's some great things with that. But I think some of the stuff that I was talking about with the volunteer corps would be, you know, people helping, people shovel, you know, coordinating. So, you've got elderly people in the community that need help with snow removal, or mowing their lawn, or just whatever. Or different things within the city of-
I have a suggestion. If, if, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That, that setting up a volunteer corps. When I was younger, there was a Quad City Volunteer Corps where young kids got together, and that's, we coordinated all sorts of stuff like that, that since died. But I think that that's something where, whether it's the Youth Commission, whether it's-
Well, actually, that's what I was gonna say. I have had some chats with Brad Hellman about the mowing corps, right? Especially high school students, et cetera, and he gave me a nice, long explanation of where that has been at before and what have been the barriers, et cetera. I think this is a perfect opportunity for a working group, that if you want, wanted to participate, we certainly could then have Eric and Brad, and probably legal counsel to some degree, sit down and, and work through the barriers and the history and the this and the that, so that, okay, so I'm writing that down. Working group. Well, I'll call, we'll call it something.
The volunteer corps.
Yeah. Yes, sir? Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, and this is in that, that same vein. Because my concern would be if we worked it solely through Parks and Recreation, that we would not have covered on that ex-tilic. And that, that's, that sharepoint is something that I thought through and had a, a challenge to that, too, is, you know, our, our work outside of that.
Okay.
I think if, I think if we make a three-sixty plan, I think that one part of it could be the park board. I mean, take it to the park board for, for their approval. I-
Yeah, there has to be some coordination. But we can work through it, so we'll come up with a schedule or timeline for looking at that.
Because I think that you could maybe work with, you know, Fork, and, I mean, we could then really kinda figure this thing out, so that we're not turning people away that's trying to make our community better, but-
Well, and it's-
All rowing in the same direction.
I've been talking quite a bit about pots of people to draw from for varieties of reasons, right? Whether it's recruiting staff, or volunteers, or opportunities. I had a lovely meeting with the school district staff and the head of the high school yesterday, and we talked a lot about opportunities, and that's still a focus on young people as that one pot to draw from. But we have plenty of other pots. I'm sorry for my analogies. But, you know, from which to draw from, from dedicated people. So, we'll, we'll turn this into a working group, I think, if that's okay with the council, and hit it from that angle. Yes, sir, Mr. Wentz?
I just wanted to throw out a potential name for the working group, Mo Lean.
Thank you. All right, I think that's all under this, unless someone has another discussion point? No? Okay, we'll move to nine point two, Chapter Six, Rights of Way, Discussion. Margaret, Ms. Kestapolis.
Thank you for getting your answer. You always seemed like, uh, mental, previously about our investigation of a hall in the driveway and the head licensing of the house. And our realization that telecommunication companies and us may have other utilities have been hanging wire, not underground installations, because they do all the very serious requirements for underground installations. But they have been installing aerial or making aerial installations for a number of years. Would that have been a need for us?
Yes, Mr. Wentz?
For a number of years, I, I guess, I had this conversation with, with Bob earlier. I don't know of any other utility that has come in that has not replaced or, which our code allows for replacement and repair of things. But I don't know of anybody who has come in over years to install, I mean, I think Geneseal came in. They were required to, to go underground, like in the last ten years or wherever. I don't know of anyone else who has come in and installed above-ground new facilities within the city. So, I'm not sure if that's accurate to say they've been doing that for years.
Well, we simply don't know permits for that.
I understand that, but we don't have any carriers or anything that has come in that would have done that.
That could be all I am reporting is that for a number of years, there have not been any permits applied for or issued.
But that's different than saying that they've been installing it for years. That's, that's different.
Well, for years, there have been no permits applied for or-
You, you had said that they've been installing them aerially for years. That's, that's different than no.
All right, so my question is correct?
Please continue.
So, in conjunction with engineering and Bob and others in administration, we did a comprehensive review of the not only Chapter Six, the year of, uh, also current applications and procedures. And as part of the remedy, it is important to put better procedures in place. And to facilitate that, we, uh, Bob immediately issued a stop work order to all utility companies while we set meeting which will occur tomorrow morning. And we create new procedures, better accountability, and then can accurately track the work of any utility company or any company or individual in that area who wants to work in the right way. So, it's been aerial installations. It's all work in the right way, because each and all one thing leads to another. And it's important that all companies or individuals to work in the right way follow all of the same rules. We unfortunately worked a bit drier.
He's hiding in the back corner.
Uh, this was his first big project, uh, arrival here. We really took to it, and yes, I believe of, uh, a PowerPoint. Are you prepared to show that now, or do you wanna do? Or maybe just you could describe, give an overview of the procedures that is developed?
I never regretted ordinance as much as Section Six. We have a meeting tomorrow with the, the utilities. We invited a number of them. There are three things, a number of things that we wanna cover. The first is that work in the right of way, that's above-ground, requires a permit. In the past, they had not been holding permits for above-ground work. They were, might be making contact with staff, saying they were going to be here or there, but it wasn't very formalized. The other issue was that if you are planning to do a project, you have to show us that you cannot go underground. There's three triggers that they have to, to meet, to prove that they cannot go underground. And is there existing underground in the corridor? Then you have to go underground. Is it technically unfeasible? Which I'll define as unfeasible, but we're going to operate under the assumption that that's a rock ledge or some rock layer or groundwater. That makes it technically unfeasible. And then another one of those is that it just has to be aesthetic. Another change to the program is the creation of a security bond for the value, ten percent value of the work, or twenty-five hundred dollars, whichever is greater, that the city would hold so that we have some assurance that the utility will, will restore the right of way to its previous condition, so it won't have sidewalks gone, and you're walking on stone for six months or, or longer. I think those were the, the three major items that we're gonna cover. We're gonna talk about secondary poles. I have to be able to justify to staff how they need those. In some instances where the power company turns a corner and the pole wires change ninety degrees or so, they may need a secondary pole to do that. Then there's also the issue of one, the power company replaces a pole. They will move their conductors over to the new pole and then cut the old pole partially, mainly in half. And then the utilities, the other telecoms are supposed to switch to the new pole, in which case, when that is done, then Mid-American will remove the old pole. Sometimes those poles take, stay out there longer than people would like to see, or we would like to see. Or they'll leave a stubbed pole there that's not pulled in the right of way, is not restored to, to previous conditions. So, those are the things that we're gonna talk about tomorrow with them. I don't know if you have any questions? If I missed anything, Margaret?
I know that you have a new application, a new application-
That's right. We, we, we created a new permit application. It took me weeks to, to realize that the term license and permit is using, used interchange- It took me weeks to, to realize that the term license and permit is using, used interchangeably. In the city of Moline, to me, a license was not a permit, but it was here, so. We made some changes and it's going to be different for the utilities and things. The, the other thing that I forgot to mention is the $200 fee for the permit that the ordinance prescribes that we charge. So that will also be a, a factor.
So well, higher I add to the comprehensive.
Yeah, basically, I have a PowerPoint that just regurgitates what I just said.
And I know that you have also taken steps to heighten awareness of staff so that staff is more sensitive to these older requirements and are aware of and need to adhere to them. And they have been, I believe, inspecting, we're engaging inspections in the right ways to ensure.
We're going to do our best with respect to that, but we don't have a dedicated permit inspector, which makes it difficult because staff are also inspecting public works projects and things. We've visited the, the field based on complaints and more often than not the contractors already pulled up stakes and it's gone, so we're not there. But ideally, we would like to have an additional person, maybe somebody.
Mr. O'Brien had a question.
So I guess that, thanks, Margaret. I, I guess at least to my question, probably to Margaret, if, whatever contractor we go with, if they say, look, I got bedrock here, there's no way I can lay this underground. Is the onus on them to prove that to us or we? So they have to show us that there's no way.
They have to actually by code as for what is referred to as a variance. I believe that director prior to support you first.
Yes, that, that, there is a variance procedure that they can follow through. Me and the Director of Public Works may still have some references in there. But those essentially would come to the council if I recollect correctly.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
I, I had a, I had an interesting thought to chew on. If a company has willingly and knowingly violated this section or part of section six, does that potentially make them an unresponsive bidder for another contract?
Well, that is a very interesting question. We have been saying. It's a very complicated issue though with volunteer responsibility to go. And we, we did then start with Sam and what are the enforcement options? I know that violations have been, I know how we look exactly for education forms or dedicated resources hopefully in addition to greater sensitivity to the code requirements. But what about sanctions for companies that violated the code and possibly repeatedly violated the code? Part of it is that because they never pulled a comment or applied one, we're not going to be sure how to handle them and data. But I'm sure there are ways.
Mr. Williams.
Well, if, if they didn't have any thing installed in our city and now they have things installed in our city and it's hung and as your memo says, it is o- only for underground installation that they were, then all of that is a violation. I mean, that, that seems like a pretty straightforward. They didn't get any permits or any licenses that allowed a, a, above ground. So all of that, that is above ground is in vi- what am I missing?
Well, there is. We're not, so when we know that for a number of, perhaps a number of years, that permits are not sought by law or mission, we're not sure how that goes there. We're not sure if, we know that all the recent installation would be in violation. That is actually the.
Right, so like this map of.
Um, um, to go back is the further back you go, how do you identify all those there?
Pictures, Google Maps, you can see if there's like along this line, another cable that has been dropped.
So, uh, and it may not turn out to be a, a thing of a problem as maybe it appears right now. But we know that that will be one piece of it. And we look at the code for options for sanctions and. And I, I try to buy three positions. One is, I, I apologize, I thought this would be available for all of us. Do we have that?
That's right, that's, that's right there.
Yeah, I was provided, it was distributed.
Well, no, it was tonight.
There's two, this, this, this thing?
Remedies for violations of chapter six.
Front page and half of, of another one?
We have it.
It's got two code sections in it.
Those are three old sections which range from penalty under the code, which would be one eleven oh seven, which is a mandatory penalty all the way to six eleven seventeen, which allows for us to demand that they remove their installations that are in violation. And that could be, and that does include facilities without, um, constructed or installed without prior issuance, but with a permit violation of this. So that would be probably the most extreme or if not maybe the most common or as sanction to the companies. So as we discussed in a meeting a couple of weeks ago about right of way issues in general, Alderman went pointed out that this would be an issue for discussion and direction by council. So a cou- a couple of things to consider while you, and we discuss this is the hardship in my cause because this service that we require removal of all installations in violation of the code. And I'm not saying that would have a not as shining a weight to that consideration. Just raise it as something to consider. The litigation have certain problems which would probably improve our claim or defenses that knew what's going on to practice for years. Allowed it to. And, and then on the other side, we do have the right, they did apply the code. So it is an option already built into. So we are looking for some direction, discussion inside whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Walden.
I don't know if this is for Bob or you, Margaret. When we had an incident with a company at Sixtieth Street and John Deere Road, at that point, did we issue a notice to stop work in all of Moline? Or did we just notice them to stop work there at Sixtieth Street and John Deere Road?
It was, they were ordered to stop at that location. And they were actually, they were stopped throughout the city at that time. I think Mike Schenk was, was the director, interim director at the time, and then they had to meet with him.
And that goes to my feeling of a bigger penalty for what's gone on since then. With your background of, and I happen to know the background too, having been here for many, many years, that you're entirely correct, we have never required a permit for above-ground installation. Alderman Wentz is absolutely correct too, because it wasn't a lot. It never came up much. If it did come up, I don't have any memory of it, but we never did require for anything up above. But if we gave an order to desist and then they continued after that, and we know they have continued after that.
They were doing today.
That makes it more egregious in my mind.
Mr. Williams.
And, and along those same lines, I mean, in our meeting two weeks ago, Daryl said that, and we'll say it's MetroNet, had lied to them, lied to him on multiple occasions. Since that cease and desist, I've personally caught them two or three times installing in different places. Today, caught them and they flat out lied to our staff saying, oh, we're just slicing some lines and, and whatever. Luckily, I had taken pictures of where their spool, maybe still sitting in the front yard of one of our residents as they pulled a line blocking up 30th Avenue. I got a call from my wife, my daughter, who is in driver's ed, couldn't get around the thing and it was, they were blocking up things. And then when they took a picture of it, they disappeared. Last night, when I took a picture of them, they disappeared. This is something that has been going on and is willful and wanted. And if we sent them a, a cease and desist, this has been going all, all over the place. Also, along those lines, I've had conversations with other providers, ones that do underground. And they have said, if I have to come into a community in which I'm competing against someone who hangs lines at one tenth of the cost of me or less of me having to bury these things, I will not compete in that community, I can't compete in that community. So if you're wondering why some people are dropping out or if some people are not willing to compete against somebody who is not following the rules, that'll give you a really good explanation of it's just not economically feasible for them to compete against people who are just doing whatever the heck they want and not following our rules and dirtying up our right of ways.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
My concern with MetroNet, just if that's the way they conduct business, basically bully us and string the lines and just do what they want to do regardless. If they're willing to do that to the council who represent the citizens, what are they going to do to me as a customer once they run the whole quad cities? It'll be media comm all over again and we'll just have another issue with a different company. I just don't, I just, it's hard to find a trust factor with someone that just chooses to do this and that doesn't bode well for the citizens we want to serve with this at the end of the day. So it's, it's, it's very unfortunate that this is the path they've chosen to take. Because they're well aware of what's going on, we're now well aware of what's going on, we're going to have some hard decisions to make.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, and I think the greatest area of concern is obviously the behavior in the last weeks or months as that conversation has been ongoing. I mean, they could, anyone could claim ignorance to a certain point, but I mean, when that's gone, that's gone. And I think that is going to be a major piece of, of, of that contention. As we look to, I guess, and, and as we look to the chapter six requirement, I don't have a, a solid grasp at this point of exactly where and how we are saying that the, what that requirement is that they're violating. And, and I think those are two separate questions, because we've been talking about the, um, the willful violation of conversa- like that's a different thing than the actual work being done. And talking about the, the hanging illegally versus hanging properly. Cause I'm concerned, I, I'm just trying to understand what that, that rule is.
So the chapter six requires any company or anyone working in the right way to either obtain a license or a permit. And what, um, and what we learned is in many cases, and that's the most important maybe only, I'm not very sure. Violated the code by not applying or changing the comment. They're not following any requirement requirements to post their security to, you know, have insurance, a rider or on to meet with the staff, be instructed and on and up. So it's a violation of those regulations. In addition, like the many of the aerial installations are violation of our requirements for above-ground installation. So they likely have not met the want of these three requirements in the code. And if they did meet them, they do not see the variance at the.
I have a quick question, then I'll call you. Do you have a sense, I know you've done a lot of research into all of this. When our code was updated to, to what it says now in chapter six, how far back that was, how, or how recent that code language is?
All right, so that code language is likely been around since 2000.
Okay.
For many updates in 2020. But the sessions that we really are get for are in issue here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams.
And, and to your point, the, the biggest issue, I mean, they did get a license. But as Margaret's memo says, the license that were provided are only for underground.
Right.
And so the, them claiming, oh, well, I didn't know, ignorance, whatever. I mean, the code is, is clear, that says everything shall be underground, the licenses for, are only for underground. And if you want to go above ground, because it's something that's not feasible or, or whatever, there's a process to, to do that. Now.
And I've had trouble finding that specific reference.
That's F.
Yeah, it's, it's a three-point thing and.
It is. Uh, six, one fourteen F. Facilities installed above ground, above ground, facilities may be installed only if, and then David went through those points of.
Thank you. Other, so we're still, so, so we've heard concern about it on, on a general level. We've, we've heard concern about this being more egregious and, and therefore that, that our response, how we hold them accountable should match that level of violation. I think you still need clear direction on which violation or how we want the violation to look. Mr. Williams.
Just as a clarification, then I'll have a comment. Just as a clarification, then I'll have a comment. At one point, David talked about licenses and permits kind of being synonymous. I noticed in your memo, you didn't include six, one, 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 zero, which talks about, because we did issue them a license. And if a license is the same as a permit, that says, okay, there's a permit out there. It, it also goes through a litany of things, if they were dishonest with us, if they installed things, erroneously, and all those sorts of things, that we can immediately revoke that permit or license, I guess, and basically require them to, well, to fix. I mean, I've got no problem if they want to come in and install underground with the, as the license that they, they said. It, it gives them that option, and I've got no problem if we work with them on, on that. But short of that, it says, if they don't want to do that and do it correctly, then after a certain number of days, it's considered abandoned and becomes city property.
That's what's in here.
I mean, that is in the ordinance, and that's what it says. And so I, to Alderman Waldron's, I think that that's the approach that we should do. What they have done has been egregious, they've done it knowingly, wantingly, and in violation of what our ordinance is. I, I don't think because of that, we necessarily say, hey, you gotta rip all of this stuff out, you can't work here, or whatever. But just say, you've got to follow our rules. And it lays it out there that says, hey, you violated it, do it right. But then if you don't do it right, you've abandoned it. And, and at that point, then we've got a ring of fiber around the city. But I mean, that's not my goal at all. But I, I guess, what I'd like to do is I'll make a motion that that's the route we, we go. We give them notice, they're in violation, trigger that section that they have to correct. And if they don't, we follow the, the options that have abandoned.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion by Alderman Wentz, seconded by Alderman Williams, to put it in, to formal language for our clerk. You're talking about six, one, 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 seven, section?
No, one, 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 zero, I believe. Because that's correct, right? That is the, that's why I was wondering why you didn't include that in your, this memo. I know you just kind of did it today, but.
Oh, yeah, I've been looking at the same.
Are you talking about, Mr. Wentz, are you talking about this letter D? This is what you want to follow?
Well, it says cities, it's six, one, 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 zero, permit suspension and revocation. And it says, hey, here's the reasons why we can, and they certainly meet at least three of those, which is false and fraudulent, misrepresentation, non-compliance with this article, installing incorrectly, failure to conduct the facility substantially in accordance with the permit, because the permit's only for underground. And then it goes on, it says that if they, we do a stop-work order, failure to a refusal for the permity to comply, they say, you know, correct the deficiencies, so they can go back and install them correctly. Upon no less than twenty days' notice, the permity remove the subject facilities or equipment. So if they don't want to correct, they can remove the stuff. After not less than thirty days' notice to the permity, or failure to cure for non-compliance, deemed abandoned and the, and the property of the city. The permity shall be liable in all events to the city for all costs of removal.
Thank you.
So here is why I do not include that, they did not get a permit.
You guys said permits and licenses are this.
No, I, I know that Director Ryder said that. I quite disagree with that, they, they overlap in some cases. The license, we need it for only issued as a stated for underground instructions. And we have no issue with that. It's the overhead, and permits were not applied for or issued, so they're not permitted.
But they're violators of the ordinance.
They are in other sections.
So, and this is why I had asked for memos to clear this up, because now we're, we're being told different things on the count.
But, but I'm so sorry. What I was getting at was making sure the motion language was clear, and so now you've read that out. And whether or not that's what she intended to write, that's what you're intending to move, correct?
That was based on what was presented here, but if now that's changed, I mean, I don't want to make a motion if, if Margaret is saying, well, that doesn't apply here, so you can direct us to do it, but it's gonna have no effect. Is that what you're saying?
I, what I'm saying is, I thought that that trying to enforce our rights under that section would be more problematic because of the technical issues of they were not ever issued a permit, so we can't revoke or suspend, yet other.
These, these items are the ones that you feel are less problematic?
Right.
Okay.
More applicable to the situation where no permit was applied.
And I'm seeing a part here about abandonment of facilities, that's why.
On one seventeen.
Right, exactly. So, so you're.
Well, but if we give them ninety days or thirty days to remove, and they don't, then it becomes.
Right. So Alderman Wentz, if you would like to withdraw that motion, you can do that and then restart.
With the permission of the council withdrawal. So then I will make a, no objections. Then I, then I will move that we enforce one, 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 seven, give their notice that they must remove or comply, and if they don't, that we can effectuate all our rights under one, 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 seven.
Thank you.
Oh, about, I'm sorry.
Okay.
What if I give the motion for to mandate to, to work this to enforce all applicable?
If, if you're saying that we can do all four?
All applicable, yeah.
All, because it hasn't been seconded yet, and all other applicable provisions.
Okay, there we go. Are we all understanding it? One, 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 seven, and all applicable portions?
And all of the.
Is there a second? What, was that you? Losing my hearing. Thank you. A second available to Alderman Williams. Discussion on that point, Mr. Schmidt.
I had two things, and one of them is escaping me. The, the second question I had was, is there a, is there any concern of us being superseded in this arena by state law?
No, we have the right to write and give our right.
Okay. And then my, my first comment is that as we look to enforcement, and I do think Alderman Wentz spoke to this, if there is a positive action toward curing the issue, I do understand that if there's a large project, that that timeline may be revised. And I think that would be something where timelines would have to be built, but obviously, if we were just ignored, that would seem to be a very negative step. I just, I'm just speaking that to make sure no one is disagreeing necessarily.
Mr. Wentz.
Yeah, obviously, I think some of us should do, but, but as I had spoken before, if they come back and say, yes, mea culpa, we screwed up, and we are going to follow your ordinance completely, and we're going to do all of these things, then staff should come back to us and say, hey, here's our timeline, the clock's ticking, but they have agreed to this. And then I guess at that point, we can, we make that decision. But until that point, we follow the, the ordinance.
Okay. Other thoughts, comments on this plan of action? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So now you have clear direction, correct? Yes, Mr. Waldron.
Same subject, different, different. We are obviously in negotiations with this provider. I think we all here want a competitor to MediaCom. It's been a goal of the council and the previous council. Do we need to step back, since we are in negotiations with these folks, to really determine what our long-term goal is here? To get a provider on a pole and not necessarily underground? Or are we gonna stick to our guns and make it all be underground? If we are sticking to our guns to make it all be underground, we know that it's gonna be a significant cost. And I guess I'm after that fundamental decision the council needs to make. We obviously know MetroNet wants to put it on poles. I think they have done that Rock Island, East Moline, and Davenport. I'm not sure about that in particular. It may be underground there, for all I know. But clearly, it's their business model. We're in negotiations with them. If we go all underground, I think it's gonna be a significant cost based on what city administrators send us. And I think we need to make sure or circle around that we're all on the same page about how we go forward.
So you want to basically pull the, pull the council for priorities on bringing a second broadband provider?
Well, like I said, I think everybody wants a second provider. I don't think that's it. I think, have we changed our mind about being on a pole or mandating be under the ground? The ordinance says it has to be underground unless they request a variance. Or we make a policy decision to allow a competitor to go on poles. And I think as a group, we need to make that decision and give some direction to Bob.
Sure. And I would add that now that you've established that was, my math, please check my math. Nineteen years ago, that, that, that portion of the code was, was put in place, you said, two thousand and three?
Two thousand and three.
Nineteen, right. And just to point out, potentially feelings have changed about that, but yes, Mr. Wentz.
Yeah, and, and I think along those lines also communicate, because I, I think that making that decision affects other things. You know, the economics of an on-the-pole thing, competing against an underground thing. An underground, from, from the people I've talked with, an underground can't compete with. So if we make it clear that we're not going to allow a competitor that is above ground, that may make it more attractive to those that have to go underground, that they may, hey, get back into the arena, or say, well, I don't need ten million dollars, I only need this. If I know that I'm going to be safe, that I'm not going to eventually have to compete against somebody who is doing things on pennies on the dollar. So I, I think that that might affect.
Miss Gustavos.
I just have to point out that this is not an agenda item.
A what?
An agenda item, correct. So.
But so, but we're doing it right away.
We have room, we have room to discuss it as an other at the end of our informational. So can we pick it up there, please, and just to stay within our guidance?
Is this not related to a right-of-way discussion and is informational? I mean, it's a policy decision, right away, you know?
It's fine, it's, it could be minutes away that we are, that we are readdressing it, so. We need that, so. Yes, Mr. Wentz.
I mean, to be honest, there was nothing in the agenda other than Chapter Six right-of-way discussion. There, I mean, there wasn't a memo in the agenda, there wasn't anything in there that, that narrowed the scope. I mean, we're talking, I mean, I think your question is, Chapter Six, are we going to enforce this thing? Or, you know, for everybody, I mean, absent the person who has violated it with reckless abandon, but moving forward for somebody who is going to follow the rules, are we going to stick with that? Or are we going to, if they're giving us something we really want, hey, maybe loosen it up? I, I mean, I think that that's a valid conversation.
It's a valid conversation, it's just legal is advising it happen at a, under a different designation to stick with our.
Remember that, and I'll bring it up as another.
Yes, that's absolutely fine. And that apparently was what Mr. Vitas was planning on. Mr. Wentz, we have the ability to adjust the agenda and add the other at the end, and then stick with it. Yes, sir.
How is it, talking about it when it's not mentioned as an other, more appropriate than talking about it when it's actually talking about Chapter Six?
Because it's not just Chapter Six, if I understand, it's about how we feel about how it impacts the current negotiations on broadband.
But that's not on the agenda either.
That's why it would be brought up as an other.
You discuss a number of items under a.
So, yes, Mr. Schmidt.
But anytime we discuss an item, how that impacts other pieces is just a natural part of that conversation.
I, I totally agree with that. All I'm saying is that once we start, once the Chapter Six discussion turns into the pending broadband proposals, and how we will evaluate them based on a number of factors, like, you know, the attractiveness of working in, or providing service here. It is my legal opinion that we have strayed too far from the discussion of the services. It is now about how the broadband proposals. So just my legal opinion.
Well, s-
As we were to try to draw on the, and.
Well, so I need to know from the clerk how to proceed in terms of assessing where the council would like to discuss it.
Normally, we go with recommendations, legal counsel, that would be my recommendation as well.
But this is.
Okay.
An ongoing issue.
It, it does pertain to Chapter Six, because it is, if I understand what you're saying, Alderman Waldron, you're saying we have to decide if we agree with what Chapter Six looks like right now in order to have the further conversation about broadband. So under that, it's fine, we can have the conversation. All right, so we keep it in that scope at this point, and then if we have to further conversation on the broadband piece of it that we're currently under, in negotiation toward, pending proposals, we'll, okay.
So, so we can discuss the item, just stop saying the names of vendors?
No, I think that what would be an actual extent of this, really, I would.
If there's a motion on the floor, would that solve the issue?
No.
What?
So what I'm, I'm trying to say here is, if you want to talk about issues such as should we need to rethink our, our, our regulations in Chapter Six to be more flexible in the future? That would be appropriate, talking about Chapter Six. We start talking about the actual proposals and their value or, you know, who might be willing to work here as a standard issue. I think that's a.
Okay, so it sounds like we really are wanting to keep it under the Six, Chapter Six discussion. We'll proceed if the council is fine with that, with the discussion that Mr. Waldron was suggesting. So the goal, if I continue to understand, is that you would like to pull the council to see how they feel about the current wording of Chapter Six related to.
Mandating underground.
Mandating underground. How does everyone feel? Mr. Wentz had his hand up.
So along those lines, I actually don't think ours probably goes far enough. I mean, I would like, long-term, I mean, Retro Quad Cities put up a picture of Avenue of the Cities where there were poles everywhere, you saw, you couldn't see any of the signs. And there are still poles up there, but it's much cleaner and a much better look. I would prefer that, actually, we stringent this up a little bit and start to reduce the number of poles and those things to clean up our community. Now, that doesn't mean that there can't be situations that are unique, that they come back to council or variants, if they need to certain criteria, and maybe we add in there that if they don't meet the criteria, but still want to come to council for whatever, then we can. then we can, you know, we can provide a variance or waive that ordinance. But I would go the opposite direction. I think those communities where people want to live that are most attractive have less wires and poles and those sorts of things. It opens up more ability for bike paths, for pedestrian. It's safer for trees, all of those things. It's a better community if we go the opposite direction and actually make that a little bit more stringent. Because, you know, Mid-American Energy is going to be providing, they're not going to go away because we start to require some of the stuff to go underground or whatever. And they're not going to raise the rates for Molineers because of those sorts of things. But we can clean up our community by, and that's just, that's an example.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien.
Do we know, Bob, I mean, it obviously costs more to bury it underground, but you're going to get better service, I think, if it's buried underground. Because I don't know what kind of cable MediaCom is using. It seems like it, there's a lot of pixelation and stopping of service when the lines are above-ground. And I think when this ordinance, back in 2003 or whenever it was, there's a big push to get rid of all this. Bruce Peterson, this was his thing, getting rid of all the billboard signs, moving all the lines underground and that type of thing. But I do think if you, if you, we stick to our guns and put it underground, I think it's going to be better service. I don't know how that, I mean, I'm not that educated on how it will affect the customers. I mean, they're going to pass that cost on to the customers, but they might have less cost if they're not out repairing lines all the time. It's all covered. They shouldn't have as much maintenance cost, I would think. But anyway, that's fine.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, my biggest concern, particularly with pushing it more stringent, is related to passing out of cost to customer. And I think, all things being equal, underground is better. I have no doubt or reservation saying that. But I think as we look to requiring it, it becomes a more challenging question if you're talking about increasing the cost of every utility that has to use that. And that gives me a really, it makes me really hesitant to move in that direction. Another question I have is, do we have any idea of, with some of the unique topography of Moline? Like, what percentage of the city would just be disqualified from going underground at all to begin? And it'd be a really complicated question with people who have not been here long enough to be able to answer. So I recognize the difficulty I just started.
Can I always tell you what I've been told by staff that down here off the bluff is more difficult to do underground work than up over? And that's as much as I know. Other than that, I don't know about.
Would ravines cause a big problem?
With what?
The ravines or compact neighborhood? What are the problems that make it so you have to?
Well, topography is an issue because the bullet does have to try to follow the grades and things.
Yes, Mr. Moyer.
Thank you. For new construction, when we're reconstructing a road, reconstructing or putting in a new road, we can certainly require utility then to move underground. That we could do.
That is my experience that most cities would do when they're doing a corridor construction is when large swaths of area would be underground.
So, so I'm getting to you. So hypothetically, if we choose to, as we've talked about, starting to focus on the I-92 corridor that happens to be down here, that would be a perfect time to go underground?
It would certainly be.
And help a problem area?
With construction, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Went.
Yeah, and to be clear, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. Not necessarily like, all of a sudden, we're going to come in and be like, hey, your neighborhood, everybody's got to drop under. But I think directing staff to come back with ordinance tweaks, clarification on what feasibility is or what's feasible, clarification on, what was the other one? You know, second poles and those sorts of things, coming back with those sorts of things. And then also, in instances where we're doing reconstructions or where there's opportunities to drop at reduced costs and those sorts of things. I think that I would like staff to come back with those options, but also include an escape valve for certain situations where they want to come back and say, hey, we think that we should waive it here because X, Y, and Z, or topography or whatever. Because technology has gotten so much better as it pertains to conduit being put under than it has ever been. And so I guess I would like to make that motion to direct staff to come back with that idea of the clarifications of those things that I talked about, feasibility and secondary poles, as well as ways to sharpen that ordinance to allow us for increased number of underground installations.
There's a second by Mr. Moyer, discussion on that item. This is pertinent to that motion?
No, yeah, this is pertinent to that motion.
Okay.
I just, I just don't want to see this thing drag on. We want to get it right. And we know the work that Bob's done, you know, getting these folks in here. But I don't know if we want to kick the can down the road too far because, I mean, the citizens have been very clear. They want some competition in here. And we don't need to, you know, belie the point here that I think we're kind of, I think we do want to, I mean, I personally would like to see it underground, but I also want to see some competition with this. And I don't know what this, what type of thing we're asking staff to do, how long that's going to even take. I mean, is that, I don't know, David, that's probably an unfair question. He's just got here. I know we're kind of beating up on you tonight.
There's no shortage of other things that.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Moyer, then Mr. Timmy.
Thank you. So this revision issue, it doesn't necessarily apply to that other issue. Because this can just be something we're looking down for the future. But I just wanted to point out one other little thing. I know it costs, it might, it might get passed on. There might be some cost passed on to the consumer. But Molineers in general are spending a lot of money on generators and on loss of refrigerated goods. And, you know, every time a storm rolls through, and to get this stuff underground is, I think, you're going to get a very positive reaction from the city, obviously, with that.
Thank you, Mr. Timmy.
So kind of a twofold question, more legal. If we were to change Chapter Six today, and hypothetically, if there were an RFP out there with bids that was related, would we have to reissue said RFP? Second question, if we went today in this hypothetical RFP with a provider that was all above-ground, would we be open to legal liability from the competitors who were submitting bids all underground?
So the answer to your second question is clear.
Okay.
The answer to your first question is, I ask lawyer.
Depends.
All right, Mr. Mercedes.
It may not, I, I, I'm not qualified. It may not because their proposals, they are designed to include negotiation. We are to mandate the radio underground installation with some of the current negotiation. Any proposal that might be handled or handled.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mercedes.
I just want to go back to Waldron's point. Do we have an appetite to have some flexibility? Because, yeah, that's the one thing people have been talking about. We want the residents, they want a competitor. And I could just, where we're at right now, if, let's say, it takes a while for us to get some of that information, well, we're not going to get into the discussion of the agreements or proposals. But I just can see this dragging. And I am willing to be flexible so that we can have another option for people. With inflation and a lot of things going up, I don't think we can wait another couple of years and just have people have a monopoly, basically. I really, I'm willing to be flexible on it. Ideally, I would love to have it all underground, but I'm willing to be flexible on it.
Thank you. I see Mr. Went's hand and then Mr. Williams.
Yeah, and I want to be clear. My proposal doesn't say, hey, we can't move forward on these other things until we come up. This is just a direction for staff. When you get a chance, because we know that it's going to take a little bit of time, come back. I think that's just a direction where we want to go moving forward into the future. We have every right at, if a proposal comes up that we like, if we say, hey, we're going to make these adjustments, you know, and allow a certain percentage, a certain number, a certain whatever, above-ground, we have that authority. That's not a problem at all. I think that these are mutually exclusive issues.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, you're not going to speak?
No, I'm not, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I, I think that if I am in favor of anything, I'm in favor of actually weakening it. And we could talk about how we used to incentivize going underground in that new construction component. But I am just very concerned with what strengthening it does to cost of all utilities. And it's, it may be a conversation worth having, but I just do not believe it is a high enough priority for consideration at this time. That's going to be my stance.
Okay, Mr. Went.
Just point of inquiry. I, because I don't know, I don't know 100% the answer when it comes to electrical, phone, cable. Are those done at a zip code level for how much they charge? Or isn't there, like, for energy, that's set, that rate's set at a state level? For phone, that's typically set at a state level. For TV and those sorts of, those are typically set at a state or national level. So I guess, I want to understand, because I have that concern as well. But I think that it's not going to be like, oh, well, Moline, we're going to charge you more per kilowatt hour because it's underground. That's built into the system.
But it's a competition factor. If there are 10 competitors in a market, but the only, the most expensive competitors can meet the requirements, then that is a price problem for residents if we can never have a midpoint or a low point competitor. So it is a matter of the companies that would even choose to do business, not as to whether an individual company is going to say, Moline residents pay more. That's the way that raises. It's a market issue and.
How many more competitors are we getting?
I think there's a lot of, and like I said, to me, I think that with what we have now and to leave it alone, it's fine. It's already more restrictive than I think it maybe needs to be, but I'm happy to leave that there. And I just think we have other priorities that are more important to address our staff, too. So I'm not interested in revisiting it.
With that, if there are no other comments on this motion to tighten up, go that direction, I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye. Oh, I, I thought you were doing roll call.
Yeah, so I think that was three, no, I heard it correctly. So all opposed?
Nay.
All right. If you'd like me to, do you want me to do roll call? I think we heard it. The nays carry that, so that motion fails.
Who, the ayes, I'm sorry?
Moyer, Went, and Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further direction on this discussion? Okay, so now we can put Chapter Six aside. We'll move on to Chapter Four, alcoholic liquor, fees on incidental activity, Mr. Stopoulos. And can I just ask? I don't know if my musician ears are messing with me, but can you all move your mics a little closer and especially you, Margaret?
It's hard to hear up there, guys, just so you know. This machine's making too much noise inside.
There we go.
You don't have to be that honest. There you go. See, I'm going to have to direct IT to check things.
It wasn't your ears.
Yeah, I would hope not. I need my ears.
Try it again, now, Margaret.
There we go. Nope.
So, Janine and I will spread this. I will start with bringing back the discussion that was had a month or two ago about incidental versus primary definitions in terms of liquor license classifications. In my memo to you, I identified tavern restaurant, waiter, clubs, fraternal or veterans organizations, entertainment recreation service facilities as licensed classifications that require.
It was a little better. You're all right. Keep it on. It, yeah.
They will, that include in their requirements that they, their, their, they had to have a primary purpose of whatever their classification is. So for instance, a restaurant, which is probably the easiest one to look at, must have a primary purpose of the, well, actually, what they do is that the sale of alcohol, alcoholic liquor and revenues and or video gaming activity shall be incidental to the principal purpose of the sale of food. So the principal purpose, I often misspeak and say primary. The principal purpose is the sale of food and gaming or sale of liquor is incidental. And that is defined as 50% or more of revenue equals principal business. And then, of course, incidental is the opposite. We have, council has talked in the past about, is this the best way to identify principal and or incidental? We had a couple of liquor hearings this year where that issue being central and that outside factors can affect the outcome of that, of whether a licensee is operating under their license. And does, did not include what they intended or what they were seeking to achieve. So to be more specific, we had a couple of, well, we had a restaurant, which was so head gaming that usually is hand in hand with gaming, where the licensee was deriving a greater, greater more revenue from gaming and. greater more revenue from gaming and sale of food. And the thing was about whether they were operating pursuant to their license or should their licensee be involved? And as the licensee person simply stated, between endemic any restrictions, augmenting and even being closed for a while. And then also being a brand new business pre pandemic. These are the types of factors that would, in any given year, tip their balance with 50% or not. I know we have talked about this before and to the point where I believe this council voted for more to him on these definitions until So one of your directives was go out and see what other communities are doing, see how this is handled. And in the gaming venue, it's much easier when you're looking at you know, how gaming and other licenses coexist. But just in terms of how you define principal and incidental, we did discover that most of the communities that we surveyed actually use that 50% cut off. Now, that begs the question of, is that just because a lot of people are doing it? Is that the right way to go? Should we maintain that definition or look further at that? And we, we looked at some communities that just changed that percentage. Kinkakee uses 15%. Quincy uses 25%. And actually Champagne has no definition of principal or incidental, while Ireland uses the term nature, the nature source of revenue. So that did not really help us solve the problem. So we think that other ways to address this and we came up with a more flexible definition for incidental and principal that is contained in my memo. And that will allow for evaluation of the intent of the licensee for the primary or secondary business and evidence of that intent. Maybe gross revenue or force is compared to the primary or dominant business operations of the licensee. And by the way, this would be the definition of incidental along with a comparison between secondary or incidental and dominant or primary business based on layout or design and devotion of space to the business purposes in the establishment, its inventory of equipment, staff and their functions, training and business advertising, along with any other relevant measure of intent of the business purpose. So what that does is it preissue from that period wages. If you're not hitting 50%, it's not your primary principal purpose. And if you're not, if you're over 50% in a purpose or a business, it's not incidental. And it just gives a greater greater flexibility in actually evaluating this.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Yeah, so a couple of quick questions. One was understandable, I mean, the pandemic and the shutdowns and all those things. I mean, I think most communities during that period of time said, hey, let's waive, and that was what typically happened, not staff doing it, but the council would waive those things to say, hey, we're not going to enforce this during this dramatic time. I know you had said that there was two examples that you had used where they used that argument. And one of them was a brand new?
Well, one was a new business, but then a year or so before the pandemic. So there are, there was never really had a chance to get going and get regular patrons and establish ourselves, so we had greater revenue.
And I understand that, but was the other one an ongoing concern? Like, did we go back and look at like 18 and 19, like before the pandemic?
Yeah.
And they met it then?
No.
So that's exactly to the crux of what I'm talking about is I understand the pandemic and the fallout from that, but this is not something that was pandemic caused.
I know, yeah. And do not misunderstand, I'm not saying that the pandemic is causing all this. So many, many businesses might just be operating outside of their license. But, and those are like the easy to write down, but we are creating a recommending language which addresses the gray areas. Maybe they won't be used very often, but under your requirement yes, we will.
Mr. Schmidt had his hand up, and then Mr. Went.
So we've all done a lot of thinking on this and there was something that kind of came to me in reviewing this and thinking back and trying to think of, where is that compromise? What is that? Because I think there are a lot of valid points we've all talked about, and it is finding balance. And I think that what these new definitions offer is a level of flexibility that helps in a more unique situation. I think it would be very valuable in trying to address a convenience mart operating, because going after food and beverage and other revenues, their revenues they could work out or do in certain ways and classify differently. So that becomes a place where I see a very large value to that. And as we get into the gray areas of places where it gets a lot closer, because I think one thing I also can the realization is I would be much more comfortable with a hard revenue related number related to restaurants than with taverns. And I think that those are, can be different business models and the readily, ready availability of a restaurant license as well, that the lack of a cap there makes it where having that sort of a larger restriction in place makes more sense to me. And I think that's also where we've seen some of the greatest workarounds, where it's actually maybe easier to set up a de facto salon style establishment of the restaurant license than with a tavern license. So I think there's a value there, but I also think that looking at, it doesn't have to be something that applies to every license the exact same way. That threshold we use on a restaurant versus tavern can be very different, because I also think when you talk about an establishment that's really just there for drinking, throw a little gambling in is different than throwing that into a restaurant. I think that that's something that has maybe changed in my mentality on that, as we kind of continue those conversations.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Went.
Oh, did you have something?
I just was going to comment that Alderman Schmidt brings up a really good point and something that we were going to talk about in another meeting was the need for caps, because most municipalities cap all of their licenses. And if we were to do that, then we could look at it on a case by case basis and really determine if it looks like they're going to be able to function as a restaurant or, you know, a bar or whatever.
Mr. Went.
Yeah. This approach, how many other communities are using this approach? I, you know, we go through this, we do the analysis, and almost always you say, well, this is what everybody's doing, so I think we should be pretty close to this. But this one is like, this is what almost everybody's doing, so we should do something that almost nobody's doing. Yeah, but so what I think my suggestion, and I think maybe this gets into this compromise, is I think the reason that there is a number is because that's enforceable. I mean, you can, you can give staff directions, say, hey, this is what it is. If you meet this criteria, you're good. If you don't miss the criteria, you don't. But I think maybe as a compromise, we layer on top of that that says, if you're an organization that doesn't meet this, you can make an appeal and make an appeal to the council or whatever, say, hey, we meet all this criteria. Hey, council, let us go forward. I think that that may be the compromise, because my concern is if we only go by this, because that's very much like giving a variance, like a plane commission or those sort of things. It's got our guidelines, but we have some flexibility on how to interpret those. My problem is if it's just this, and it's just a staff member that is going off of this, I don't know how you enforce it.
It's not, so I want to, I need to
Or one individual, I don't know how you enforce that.
Well, the thing that we have already is we have that appeal process. It's called a liquor hearing, and they get to make their case, but it goes to the liquor commissioner. So you would, if you wanted to come to council, then you needed to say you don't need a liquor commissioner to do those hearings. And that means there's more work for the council, if I'm hearing you correctly. You said you wanted them to appeal to the council.
No, well, I think the liquor commissioner, for what they do, because they haven't historically done incidental or primary. All the things
That's the point of a liquor hearing, that's what I'm trying to define.
But what I'm saying is, they haven't been doing it.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so, I mean, they haven't, and even the couple of times that we have, we've just been like, well, COVID hit, so.
No, we gave them a window to, because the argument is, in other instances, we need to be business friendly, but we can't say that we need to be business not friendly. There, I would, at the risk of weighing in, and I don't really want to as you debate this yourself, among yourselves, but but the compromise that you're talking about is, it has to apply, we have to treat businesses similarly if we want to say that there's an element of business friendliness here. Otherwise, we're just going to shut a lot of people down, but I'll turn it back over to you all.
And I think that to the point, then if it is a hearing with the liquor commissioner, fine, but the ones that meet this 50% threshold, I think that they should stay up and move forward. The ones that don't, so I think it should be alternative route. Otherwise, you're going to have every single person coming in here and doing an appeal with this gray area and have to have a hearing for it? That, I mean, that's my concern on
There is a hearing already.
For every single liquor license.
If it's needed.
Yeah.
If they're, if they appear to potentially, I'm sorry, you answered the question.
If there is an alleged or suspected violation, such as the cases that the liquor commissioner is heard, that came to the commissioner via, you know, a violation process. And they were given a hearing. And at that point, the 50% factor was applied. And, and of course, the hearing of their issues were great, which did lend grievance to their position in that incident. But the process would be that something would trigger
My question is, what triggers that?
Well, all right, so we, what triggered this discussion in part is initially that list from finance.
Right, because they didn't meet a criteria.
Right, right.
But if there is no criteria, what is the trigger that would trigger this?
So I think you're saying that
Would it just be a complaint?
Well, yeah. And that would happen as well, a number of things which would trigger a hearing if, you know, we had, one of the cases was that they, I believe the licensee had a terrible license, but the name was just a little for both firms. And was the bar. It was really big. And so that, you know, seeing that identifying it would itself trigger a hearing.
But wouldn't having the 50% just give us sort of finance, being able to like, okay, these are the ones that meet the criteria, and these are the ones that we should look at further? I mean, my concern is, this winds up being some, a little bit of, because it is all gray, the entire thing is gray, that it's, you're picking on me, but you're not, there is no criteria on which ones you're choosing to do and which ones you're not.
So I think what you're saying is maintaining 50%
Yeah.
or some percentage, but allow for some
Appeal or alternative?
Or, or maybe in the hearing, allow
This is the criteria.
Discussion in the hearing to make a result different than just the
I've got no problem with that at all.
The clerk would like to say something, then, Mr. Schmidt.
So I wanted to get a little bit of clarification. Last time that we spoke about all of this, we talked about reclassifying. And part of the reason why we were reclassifying and allowing taverns, much like the clubs, to have minors, actually, if they're accompanied by a parent in there, is so that we could look at this in terms of the 50% revenue and reclassify and say, okay, you really are functioning as a tavern, not a restaurant. But it still doesn't, it still allows them to have children, because that was a big thing, as well, if you make us a bar, now we can't have minors in here. So if we change our classifications, we allow that, then we kind of get rid of that problem. But we still are always, when we think about that list, that we looked at those as we looked at the 50% revenue, the biggest issue is video gaming. And so if the appeals that we're going to start seeing, if we do this, is really those taverns that are having over 50% revenue. And oftentimes, you're going to see one that's been in business for 40 years, it's a neighborhood bar, and they're small, and they have, you know, they look, they sound like a bar, but maybe their gaming is over 50%. What do we do in five years when we have no more? Even if you came to council and they appealed and you said, okay, we're going to call you a Class K video gaming carter, because that's how you're functioning. If the intent of this council is really to do away with those, then how are we going to classify them?
Mr. Schmidt was next.
And I'm, and actually, this definition gives a lot of opportunity to say, this is, this is how you meet the criteria if you do not meet a hard criteria.
I do agree with setting a number. I think we're going to be arguing a little bit about the numbers, but I think by setting a threshold for triggering a review by staff, look, you can walk into some places, yes, it's a bar. And I do have that concern of we don't want to be, just because a bar maybe isn't doing so great, or is having
so great, or is, is having a bad year or even a bad decade, but you know what, they're getting by, it's someone's life savings, they're keeping it open, that's how they're making their, like, I don't want to be closing down a business. And this gives us that criteria to say, yes, it looks like a bar, it feels like a bar, it's a bar. You walk in and there's a cooler on the ground, they didn't meet the threshold, that's not a bar. And I think this gives you that tool to make that next step beyond just that number consideration, which has always been a problem for me.
Yes, Mr. Wang.
So I, I, I couldn't agree with you more. So what, what I'd like to do is keep the 50% threshold, you can amend it if you want, but then have the overlay of if you don't meet that criteria, then this triggers and, and at that point, they can, um, make their, uh, their appeal to the liquor commissioner.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
And I, so, and I'm, I'm fine with moving, and we have to put a number in, that's fine. My concern is I would think that we, I would want to move forward with different numbers depending on the kind of license. Like a tavern, uh, uh, the tavern threshold, we had talked before about, well, let them count their food as revenue, because if a tavern turns itself into a restaurant, that's a positive for the community. And a restaurant is probably the one with the most strict requirement, I think that's right. So I don't know what the best way to incorporate that sort of, it could be different.
Mr. Wang.
Yeah, would there be the possibility for, and I guess just to your point, the, you, the, the calculation is different for a, a tavern, uh, it is, um, that liquor and food have to meet the, the 50% threshold. And if it's just enumerating them, and it makes a list of three or four, however many we need to put into enumerate it, then that's an option or if there's a better way?
Yeah, I have a.
The threshold for restaurants is different.
I have a question for staff who's in charge of that calculation that would then come to us in the, um, as part of a review. Is that simplified enough? Does that, it, does that complicate things farther than necessary or? Do we have staff to talk about that? Carol?
We have the numbers for both food, liquor, and gaming for all of the places that they have licenses, right? We've been provided it, so then it's just put into a spreadsheet and.
Okay.
See what Excel says.
So it's not overly complicated to separate it out by class with different criteria?
But those are un-audited. They're submitting that information, but it's not audited in any way, so they can submit any numbers that they want.
They're paying taxes on it, so, I mean, it's a felony if they're wrong.
I mean, that's just something that Keith and I had discussed. Carol, did you have any additional?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you, but the, the backstop is, it's a felony if they're lying to us. And if they're lying to us to try to, to, you know, I mean, because they're paying their taxes on it. I mean, if they're doing that, because there are probably some that are lying to the, the state right now not to pay as much in taxes, I mean, that's just what the system wants.
Okay, so we have two aldermen who have discussed a different formula for one class, but keeping these suggestions from.
I guess I don't know if we had a second.
Legal? No, didn't come forward as a formal motion, getting to that. Do, do you want to make a mo, or, or give direction, because this is a, this is discussion item, that when you write up the ordinance update, it include X? Yes, Mr. Wang?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we direct staff to come back retaining the, the language with a hard number of 50%. For, and we'll just start for bars, taverns, and, and other, but having this language that was provided as an alternative if they did not meet those hard number criteria. And have staff come back with that as the, the change in the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by, let's give it to Waldron? No, it's Schmidt.
You can give it to me, I'll second it.
All right, discussion on that? Mr. O'Brien?
My question always goes back to this, how do we enforce this? I mean, I know you say, look at the taxes they pay, but we have to send somebody out right to the taverns and.
No.
No?
No, it's just, it's the spreadsheet.
It's an automatic spreadsheet to come to them.
Well, because, because we have to do renewals, so at renewal time, I have to make these decisions as liquor commissioner.
So you're enforcing it?
Yep.
You've just given me some more tools is all you're doing.
All right.
Is from my perspective, but.
And then we review the ones that don't meet the number criteria.
Okay. That's it?
Start with 50 and then we can, when we bring it back.
It's available in a future meeting. All right. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So you have enough direction on all points of this memo at the time being? Okay.
One other piece.
There's one other piece that you were going to cover?
Yes, just briefly. So when we talked about the reclassification before, um, I just wanted to bring back before we have the roundtable discussion in August, it's our bi-annual fee review that Keith always heads up, um, and we'll be looking at fees. So I wanted to bring to your attention that if we do, um, condense some of those classifications and, and add some new ones that make more sense, um, as you might recall, we, we would be getting rid of options two, three, and four. Those are additional bar station, caterers, retail, and restaurant alternate. Each of those, um, are a $400 annual fee. And so I just wanted to share some numbers with you that Keith provided. In 2021, um, the revenue that was brought in from those options was $13,200. And, I'm sorry, was $10,400. And then as a comparison, he provided those in 2019, which was $13,200. So, um, we could expect to lose no more than $13,000. And if we were to stretch that over, all of our renewals are 30 or so renewals, we would increase the annual fee from $1,400 to $1,410. So our recommendation is not to change the fees at this time. I did, um, talk with Keith too, we looked back to see, um, when our fees went up last, and that was in 2016, they went up from $1,200 to $1,400. And then in the memo that Margaret had provided back in April when we first talked about this, we were a little bit on the high end compared to other municipalities, so that kind of led to our recommendation as well.
I also noticed in, in the recommendation regarding the maximum fine, um, I guess I, I'd like to hear some input because I, I, I think that maybe increasing our maximum fine may be something, I mean, it's not, we don't have to provide the maximum fine, but I think that gives the.
More tools.
The liquor commissioner more tools to, because there, I'm sure there are some situations where a higher fine may be, uh, appropriate and may get us the, uh.
Did you, but you, well, if I can make a suggestion.
Sure.
I, uh, uh, as I've only done this just over a year, there haven't been enough hearings of repeat offenders that would get them to the maximum fine, right? So actually, maybe the spread of the fines, right, rather than the max is what's most important, that the first violation, it sends a real message, that the second violation sends an even bigger one, right? That, and I mean, I know that's the general understanding of how that schedule works, but that's all I would point out, is that really, when you get to a second and third violation, you, you should be paying quite a bit.
Right, so, so I guess I'd like to move that the mayor comes back with recommendations.
No, legal comes back with recommendations. Can, really, can you please revert that?
All right, I, I'll make the motion that, that staff come back with, uh, uh, higher initial and increments for repeat offenders.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Anything else particular to chapter four? Up for discussion? Not tonight, okay. Thank you, we'll look forward to that update slowly but surely, we will get through. So we move to 9.4, chapter 23, Parks and Recreation, and chapter 16, Libraries, Housekeeping. Ms. Kostopoulos.
I've actually got that one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, um, as you know, in pursuant to the strategical 2.3F, staff has been conducting a comprehensive review of all chapters of the Mullen Code of Ordinances, and to correct those items that are merely housekeeping in nature, the most significant change in both chapters 16, which is Libraries, and 23, um, Parks and Recreation, was a more streamlined, concise description that was provided by our Finance Director, Carol, of the annual reports and annual and monthly reports section of those chapters respectively. Are there any questions on that and those housekeeping changes to those two chapters?
Yes, Mr. Wang.
I, I had one question I'd emailed, but I, I didn't hear back. Within the ordinance, I think it both says with, you know, that, uh, the, the board members shall be picked from the residents or people who reside in, in Moline or, or whatever. But there isn't anything in there that requires that during their term, they remain residents of Moline. And so I, I was wondering if maybe there should be some clarification on that, because the only way to remove that, I mean, in the removal, it doesn't say anything about that, it's just that they're, you know, doing bad stuff. But, um, but I, from my understanding, I think talking with a couple of other people, our understanding was if, if you move out of Moline, you probably shouldn't be on the board unless we want to specifically, because I, I think there was at one point for the library, a, a discussion about having someone, a non-resident, because I think we do do some library cards to, to non-residents, but that'd be a policy decision, but I think that, that clarification might be something that's good.
Ms. Kostopoulos.
I agree with you, and we'll make that.
To chapter two?
No.
Though that are, for all, or are you just talking before libraries and parks?
No, he's talking about this, this one.
Well, I think for this, I mean, chapter two, that's a whole different discussion. I know, I know it's on the first reading tonight, but I think there's some things that need to be.
So just apply to Parks and Libraries. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be very quick, Your Honor. But I didn't know if the chief was aware of section 161103 that states that the, uh, library.
Oh, yeah, I know.
I just believe, we, we're going to send a police officer to retrieve an overdue library book?
That's it, no.
The library director.
Don't say.
Okay, because, um, is there any action you want to take on that?
I, I think that should be removed.
Is there a second?
Well, some people really want their books, you gotta.
Are we moving on this or is this just, uh, housekeeping?
Oh, yeah, this is under informational.
Yeah.
So when it comes to the final readings, please bring it back. All right, so we're finished with 9.4. Correct? All right. We will now call our council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, there's no invocation, roll call, please.
Alderman Williams.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
The honor requests approval of committee of the hall and council meeting minutes of June 7th, 2022, and council and executive session meeting minutes of June 14th, 2022, and the appointment made this evening, June 28th, 2022. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill 3012-2022, an ordinance amending chapter 20, motor vehicles and traffic of the Mullen Code of Ordinances, appendix V thereof, always stop intersections by removing the intersection of 19th Avenue and 35th Street. Council Bill 3013-2022, an ordinance amending chapter 20, motor vehicles and traffic of the Mullen Code of Ordinances, appendix V thereof, always stop intersections by removing the intersection of 3rd Street and 18th Avenue. Council Bill 3014-2022, an ordinance amending chapter 20, motor vehicles and traffic of the Mullen Code of Ordinances, appendix V thereof, one-way streets by making a one-way for eastbound traffic between 15th Street Place and 16th Street and 17th Avenue and 18th Avenue A. Council Bill 3015-2022, an ordinance amending chapter 10, elections of the Mullen Code of Ordinances by repealing chapter 10 in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof one new chapter 10 dealing with the same subject matter. Resolutions. Council Bill 1112-2022, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase two backhoe loaders from Martin Equipment, Rock Island, Illinois, on Sourcewell contract number 0321119, JDC, in the amount of $271,000. Council Bill 1113-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to a contract with Stichter Construction Incorporated for project number 1372, 2022 Stormwater Project, in the amount of $262,998.50. Council Bill 1114-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to a contract with Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities Incorporated for project number 1377, 36th Avenue Court Reconstruction, in the amount of $835,240.68. Council Bill 1115-2022, a resolution approving a sole-source contract, I'm sorry, this should have been in. Non-consent, I apologize.
Move to approve, consent agenda.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill 1115-2022, a resolution approving the sole-source contract with Restro Sound for the Sesquicentennial Celebration Stage and Sound System, for the amount of $69,726.40.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Sorry, did you catch that motion by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman Schmidt?
Yes, thank you.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Council Bill 1108-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to a contract with Legacy Corporation of Illinois for motor fuel tax, section 22-0028400 IP, 47th Street Reconstruction, for the amount of $1,748,547.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman Went. Discussion? Mr. Schmidt.
Margaret, is there an issue where she said 27th instead of 47th?
Says 47.
As long as it's right here.
You said 27 instead of 47.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
How about we just withdraw the motion and restart?
I'll withdraw the motion.
Is that okay with everyone? Thank you. Let's restart that item, 18.1.
Or is it Resolution 1108-2022, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to a contract with Legacy Corporation of Illinois for motor fuel tax, section 22-0028400 IP, 47th Street Reconstruction, for the amount of $1,748,547.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman Went. Discussion? Mr. O'Brien?
Was this pulled from the agenda, um, a couple of weeks ago?
Correct.
Correct, two weeks ago.
And to have staff input, which they put on the appendancy or attachments.
Okay. And everyone's concerns were addressed?
They were addressed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Nay.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Nay.
Moyer.
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays, and that motion passes. I'm sorry, went a little out of order.
18.3.
Council Bill 1116-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and amend, execute an amendment to the funding agreement between the City of Moline and the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the city's participation. I'm sorry, went a little out of order.
18.3.
Council bill 1116-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and amend, execute an amendment to the funding agreement between the City of Moline and the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the city's participation in the Trust Fund Single Family Rehabilitation, CFR 3, program round three, with roof-only repair and disaster contingency award, and authorizing community developments to have to do all things necessary to implement said program requirements.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman. Sorry, who, I'm sorry. You're all starting to sound the same.
I have a little thing in my throat, so I still.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Macias. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Council bill 3016-2022, I'm sorry, first reading ordinances. Council bill 3016-2022, an ordinance amending chapter 2, administration of the Mullen Code of Ordinances, by repealing chapter 2 in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof, one new chapter 2 dealing with the same subject matter. And that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Miscellaneous business. I don't have a whole lot pre today. I have begun my annual tours of all the departments, chatting with staff, getting their ideas, feedback, having a general discussion, and that's been very good. I believe I've hit almost everyone. I have a few more departments to go to this week, and I've shared some of their observations with the city administrator, so he can work through some of those. Conversations always come back to recruitment in some departments, right? How are we really getting out there to try to find staff? It's a continual issue, et cetera, et cetera. But those have been good. Move with the mayor was a small crowd, but an enthusiastic group, in fact, met the son of a former mayor, which was kind of fun, who walked with us with his dog, and very impressed that a community member wanted to get out there after working the 11 to 7 shift at Deer. So they were, they were there, ready to go, ready to chat, and it was good to get to know people. So I encourage you to join me on the next one in July. We'll see. It doesn't, to me, it doesn't matter how many people are there, it's just that we're connecting and doing something healthy, and I need it anyway, so it's a good, it was a good thing. I did want to say that, as usual, we have lots of things on every agenda that are all important, that we've been trying to work toward, and I did check with our legal staff about the ADU ordinance that we had said, please bring back language, et cetera, et cetera. So that's set for July 12th, that's what our projected date of bringing that back. So I just wanted you to have that in your mind, so that you really focus in on that attachment, all those attachments, when we, when it does come on the 12th. And that's all I have. Mr. Williams.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Macias.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So July 4th, Independence Day, the Second Ward has a really neat parade that's been going on for over 50 years, I believe. It's been a very long time. 10:00 AM, everybody's welcome. Basically, it's just the shortest parade you're gonna see. Everybody on their bikes goes around a couple of blocks and that's it. But it's really neat, so everybody's invited. It's, I believe, 10:00 AM on July 4th, so, and also extending the invitation to our elected officials. Thank you.
12th to 25th, you won't miss it. Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of things. One, I, I apologize, I missed a couple of meetings beforehand, and with that, the chapter 2 administration, I'll, I'm gonna send out a memo to everybody of some concerns I have, and then people can digest it, and we'll talk about it at the next meeting, when it's up for second reading. I had a question, because I wasn't here for the discussion regarding the landscaping ordinance and the enforcement of it. What was the resolution? I was, I tried to watch it, but it was kind of, the audio was not terrific on it. What was the, was the resolution that we're not going to enforce it until somebody comes back, or are we going to enforce the landscape, like, like for the Best Buy site? I mean, what, what was the end result?
I think the end result conclusion was, is that the way the ordinance is structured, the way it was written, is that it was being, the Best Buy facility, as there was no, no change to the physical structure itself, other than an interior remodeling, that the ordinance, the landscape requirement did not apply. That in the case of McLaughlin down on John Deer Road, it does apply and is being applied because they are actually adding in addition to the property. That's how I understood it.
I do also distinctly recall that this council, I believe it was unanimous, I could be wrong, but reemphasized that we want to see landscaping addressed, but that the ordinance would have to either get more flexible or more simple or something to allow it to, to really happen. That's how I recall that. But we definitely promoted landscaping upgrades.
So I, so I guess then my concern, because it applied to the old Toys R Us, which didn't put any addition to it, it applied to the Storage USA, which didn't put any addition to it, it applied, I mean, it's, that's where I'm not understanding, it's kind of like this selective, all of a sudden we've decided we're not enforcing it there. I mean, I know that there was a question regarding Ashley Furniture, but the reason it didn't need it was because the threshold is it has to be over 25% of the building value had been improved, and since that was part of the mall, that's why it didn't. Dick's did, because it was a new build onto it, but Ashley was just a renovation that didn't meet the criteria of 25% of the mall. There were, I mean, I think there was one discussion about the changing of hands, that doesn't trigger it. It is just, if you're renovating and the renovations of that building are more than 25% of the value of that building, that triggers it, and that's the point system. If you go over 75%, you gotta meet 100% of the thing. And so that's where my concern was coming out of that. I got the feeling that we were saying, we were saying things about the code that wasn't true, that it does apply to, to that property and has always applied to properties that were renovated. I followed up with Chris Mathias and Sean Chris, and Chris Mathias was, and I think he sent a message that says, "This absolutely applies." And so that's where I'm, I guess, was, was it council's motion to say, "Don't apply it to that"?
So I believe that we need to check. My recommendation might be opposite to this.
I'm just relying on the memo that you four attorneys from Ansel and Gleek wrote, and we paid for it. And it was clear in that memo that everybody got that, you know, it applies and it doesn't apply, and guys.
I think we need to revisit the whole issue of landscaping overall.
I think we do.
I think right now, Alderman, let us check the minutes and give you an accurate answer to your question. If you're confirming what you said, make your right, I don't know why.
There's a lot going on.
I'm a little bit fuzzy on that. I don't like directing my timing to do it.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Directed him to?
To make the change that council, yes.
But did that include enforcing it at the Best Buy building, or not enforcing it at the Best Buy?
I don't have the link there was any, so, best.
I would concur with that.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion that we enforce the landscaping on the Best Buy building.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Moyer. Mr. Timian.
The, the finding of that council meeting was that there was adequate ambiguity in the code to open us up for litigation based on the definition of site or whatever the issue was. And so the motion during that meeting was in fact to have staff come back with a revised vision of said code to remove that ambiguity. And so that was where we left it, and pending staff's recommendations, I won't vote for enforcement of something that opens up, up to liability.
Thank you. Mr. Williams.
And to that point, I don't disagree with you. During that conversation, there was a lot of information that was, said that was incorrect regarding the, the ordinance. I mean, there was discussions that, well, we just didn't enforce it here, or it didn't apply there, when those things, there was reasons why it didn't apply, or there was misunderstanding that it, you know, like there was landscaping done at Kmart when during that discussion, it was like, well, we didn't do it at Kmart, but we did. It just, they didn't wind up choosing to do islands, they did Arbor伐地 and some other stuff. And so I think that the issue of that conversation that night was that whoever was answering your questions did not completely understand the code. The code has been enforced and continued, and had, we've, it's never been, to my knowledge, has anybody has ever questioned it. And so until such time that somebody questions it, I think we should enforce it. If we want to clean it up and make it a little bit more easy to read and all those things, I couldn't agree with you more. But if we miss this opportunity to enforce that there, that will be a barren parking lot for another 30 years, with wonderful landscaping on one side of it and fairly good landscaping on the other side of it, and it is just going to be a, a blight on 16th Street within my ward, and, and soon to be, well, I guess, oh, yeah, you're right, at 16, you'll have.
No, it'll still be.
Yeah, that, that side of it, yeah. But, so I, I think that this is an opportunity that will absolutely be lost for probably 30 years if we don't enforce it now. So I encourage you to vote yes to enforce its ordinance.
Mr. Schmidt.
Motion to table.
Second.
All right. Motion to table by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Timian. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
I need a roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Alderman Timian.
And who was the second on the initial motion by Alderman Went?
Moyer.
Okay. I have to make sure I have that right. So on the motion to table, Alderman O'Brien.
Aye.
Tim, I'm sorry, Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Nay.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Nay.
Moyer.
Nay.
Five ayes, three nays. The motion to table passes.
Point of clarification, was that to a point definite, or?
Indefinitely.
So you're just killed it?
Yes, sir.
Didn't want to vote on actually enforcing it? Okay. I don't believe it's an appropriate action for the council to vote to enforce something on a specific entity in that format.
All right.
And I didn't feel the need, I, that's, that is why I chose to table.
Thank you. Do you have anything else under miscellaneous, Mr. Williams?
Uh, no, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Timian.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the pleasure of attending the NAACP Vision Awards this last, when was that?
Saturday.
Saturday. I appreciate it you were there as well. It was a fantastic event, and Reverend Ford from Project Now was the keynote speaker. Just reinvigorated the necessity of treating our, everyone in our, in our purview as, as leaders of the city with compassion and really looking to help reduce a lot of barriers for blighted communities when it comes to accessibility with grocery stores and just very simple things, banks, that they might not have access to because it's a mile away and they don't have a car. And so these are things that I'm, I'm really thinking about, and I might be bringing up to council for further direction in the future over the next year or so. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moyer.
Your Honor.
Mr. O'Brien.
Well, I want to give the police and fire credit. I don't know how much they have to do with it, but I think the fireworks are really, I mean, they're not as bad. I know. It's 4th of July weekend, it's gonna get worse, we all know that. But, I mean, last year it just seemed like from Memorial Day, at least Memorial Day on, it was just bad, and it hasn't been, I think this wouldn't have gone, it hasn't been that bad this year, so kudos to you guys. Thank you.
I think we also saw, I think I saw, while I was doom scrolling today, the, the Sheriff Bustos also put something out, so the coordinated effort.
Yeah.
Is out there.
It's been better. Improvement.
Mr. Waldron.
Mr. Schmidt.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Vitas.
Pleney.
All right. Take it away.
Pleney. The first thing I wanted to do is I just, well, I think we're gonna start with the, the meeting that, where are you, Tony? I can't see it. There you are. Tony had an opportunity to attend the council meeting in Kelowna the other night. Was that Monday?
Yesterday.
It was yesterday. And surprisingly, Kelowna is interested in actually entering into an IGA with the City of Moline to actually serve as the operators for their wastewater treatment plan. So, maybe want to add something to that, but it's really, it's interesting that these smaller local governments around us are starting to turn to us for all things utilities, which speaks to our strategic plan discussion the other night.
So that's hard.
It's strengthening that discussion.
So I would just add, Administrator Vitas mentioned this in the roundtable discussion two weeks ago.
Yeah, I believe so.
And.
I forgot.
We don't, staff doesn't have specific direction regarding a regional approach to utility O and M, but we just wanted you to be aware that we're moving forward with this, and the next step for us would be to develop an IGA with, together with Ansel and Gleek.
Thank you. Great job. For your good work.
It's happening. It's happening. All good things, right? All right, that takes care of one. I put in front of everybody a copy of this document, and the reason I put it out there is I wanted to let you know more than anything else that one of the, one of the advantages to being a participant on this platform with Zen City is that it really provides us an opportunity to dig deep into the social media world, to get a handle on exactly what citizens are thinking about all things that we are doing, whether it's something in our strategic plan, whether it's a construction project that's going on, whether it's delivery of police and fire services that happened because of a major incident in the community, or whether it's the new pool. This program uses artificial intelligence to gather all of that information. So, and I'll give you an example, across the river in Bettendorf, they used this program, and they got a quick handle on, last summer when all of the car thefts were happening. There was a lot of background discussion going on within the community that they were blaming the police department, that they were doing an inadequate job. You know, it alerted the police department, it alerted the city manager, the city administrator's office, you know, that there was an issue that was going on. So they, they've been around a long time, and they are, they are here locally in Bettendorf, that's the closest place, but you can see that they have 300 different municipalities across the country. It is an Israeli-based company, I will say that, since you're aware of it, they're based out of, out of Israel, but then they have their operations in Delaware, of course, all places. The, the normal cost for this, that's what it is, it's normally about 25,000 for a city of this size, but they're willing to do it for less than 15,000, and get their foot in the door. but to the non-English-speaking part of our community, which is here. And that's something that we don't have a great ability to do. So my recommendation, my thought is, is to go forward with this. They approached me a year ago and I put it off because I wasn't ready. There was just too much going on. So this is a tool that we can use and, you know, my thought is, is that we should pursue it. Unless somebody objects, I would like to do this.
Any thoughts? Mr. Schmidt?
So this is below the threshold of where you're needing our approval?
All right, it is.
Okay.
But I don't want to just use that approval authority, you know, and just blatantly.
I just want to, yes, no, I want to make sure I understood the ask.
Yeah, it's below the fifteen thousand dollar threshold.
Mr. Moyer?
Hi, thank you. To me, it just seems like this just gives a chance for the loudest speakers. I mean, it's almost like encouraging, I don't know. It just, to me, it seems like it's encouraging negative comments and it's putting more weight on what those who are willing to get on social media and speak, and it's ignoring then maybe the other voices that aren't, that aren't out there.
Yeah. Well, I mean, there's two sides to it. I mean, you have the vocal minority, which local governments are typically, you know, dealing with on a daily basis. You know, and then you have the silent majority. And really, their goal here when they created this platform was to get to that side of the table. In other words, to present all the information. That way you're not just hearing.
We have a great app. We have abilities to give feedback online. So if somebody's got a problem, they can report it. And they call us as well. So I mean, I think we get that information back to staff as well, so.
I don't get that information. How's that? I don't get that information unless I hear it from somebody. Really, I think getting that information from a broader audience is really what we should be doing. We should be listening to the whole community, hear what's really going on.
Oh, I'll call in here in a second. I will just say that I met these, I didn't sit down with them. They were presenting the Israeli directors of this at the U.S. Conference of Mayors. I will dig up my notes. I didn't know you were bringing that tonight. But I will, I will dig up those notes just to see what I wrote down. But I distinctly remember seeing them present something at that, so just add that to the conversation. Yes, Mr. Mercedes.
Well, and thank you. Is there any competitors or other companies that do the same services?
Not this. Not this. Truly unique. I have not, I have not found anybody else who does it.
Mr. Went?
I'm not opposed to outreach and figuring it out, but I do appreciate Alderman Moyer's concern. I'm not on social media a ton, but my wife is. And the skew you get from those sorts of things of thinking, oh, this is what everybody's thinking, that is my concern. And so I'd like, my preference would be that you hold off and maybe come back to us with maybe a little bit more information on how they avoid those types of issues of an overemphasis of people who are just loudest, actively engaged, most repetitive, whatever, and going to those things where we're really getting some info from people who we don't otherwise hear from or I think that that would be important for us to move forward and spend money on this.
Okay. Mr. Mercedes, you have another question?
Well, I see a lot of value in getting some of those data points. It could actually save some money with staff time if you have like a dashboard. But I really would like to learn more and maybe, may, if they could do a presentation.
I could actually have them do a presentation live if you want.
Yeah, I really would love to see it.
I think it's a great opportunity for the city. I mean, the greatest difficulty you have in managing a city is not knowing what people are thinking. And if you can use Survey Monkey, that's great. That's basically steering and directing the conversation generally, right? Because you want to get information back. We use, we use a lot of different tools, but we really don't reach beyond just what, four or five hundred people who might respond.
Yeah, and to Alderman Moyer's point, if, not all our residents might have the app, but a big chunk do have Facebook Messenger and would take a picture and send it to us. So there could be some money-saving opportunities there by bypassing some of the stuff that we do and creating some efficiency. So I'm just interested in seeing what other opportunities there could be with this.
Mr. Timian, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Brien and then Mr. Timian.
I'm just curious to see how it works because I know that when you knock on people's doors, you think you know what people are thinking. You get a surprise. Really, you think you know, you know.
So I'd like to see how it works.
I can give you, I can give you an example that I'm well aware of. It's down, down in Florida back several years ago, you know, when they were expanding soccer, right? They wanted to put in a new, you know, Beckham wanted to have a new stadium and they, they wanted to put it in Fort Lauderdale, okay? And people in Fort Lauderdale, you know, they weren't sure what people were thinking. So at that time, the city manager, he was using Zen City. You know, he wanted to hear what the real voice of the people was. So what he did is he, you know, they held their public hearings, they held their meetings and, you know, people showed up and a lot of objectors, a lot of people didn't really want the stadium. And then they actually went in and they targeted through the system. And they actually could drill down into the community and capture the conversations that were going on. And guess what? Seventy-five percent of the people were in favor of the project, twenty-five percent were not. And you know what the council did? They approved the project. So that's the kind of information you're looking for. So if we decide we want to do something that is on the edge, right? Maybe people don't, we don't know what people are really thinking.
Right.
And we don't want to make decisions in vacuum. I mean, absolutely don't want to do that, especially if there's big money involved. You know, so whether it's our money or developer money, doesn't matter. And as we move forward with plans for the I-74 corridor realignment, do we really know what people are saying other than the surveys that we did? I don't know. I don't know.
Mr. Moyer?
So another thing that cities can do, I mean, we could, we could invest more into having, you know, board meetings, for instance. You know, it's a bit of a problem to do me, as you know, setting up a meeting and people don't always show up. But if we had consistent opportunities to have board meetings and made it sort of a priority, we might get more input from residents.
It's true. Can I offer another perspective?
My, my only problem with this is that you're gonna end up, you're basically getting information from those people willing to go on social media and comment.
Mr. Schmidt?
So I have used several platforms that do this type of work, not specifically related to cities, but in, in my business, I have used these platforms on behalf of clients and been in there. There certainly are limitations and I, I think to be comfortable with it, having a demonstration is definitely in line with what I'd like to see too. But I think there is a lot of value to understanding that conversation. I mean, your point that you are seeing those voices coming through, putting them in the right context, because those aren't just voices that are spoken, they're also voices that are heard. And that's what getting amplified on social media, even for those who are just lurking users. So I think while, while it's not going to be an end bell, right? This is not a replacement for going to everyone's door and asking what they think.
No.
But it helps to triangulate that with, with that perspective. And over time especially, can be useful.
I would say, I just want to, I'm sorry, I know, I missed you. Sorry, I was like, mm. But I, the perspective I would add is my, you may or may not know, I've done a lot of community outreach and had a lot of opportunities for people to come and chat, and they don't. And sometimes it's because they're working this, the two to eleven shift where they're on, you know, the only way they actually engage with issues is on social media. So while I completely understand that sometimes it's the, I guess you're saying squeaky wheel, like, like, or the negative, like, trolls. Okay, you're talking about trolls. But there are people who, you know, in some ways we cut them out of the conversation if we don't go to try to find what they're talking about. Reddit is a perfect example of people who, there's like a community around Reddit of discussion, you know? I've been asked about bike, the bike paths through Reddit and stuff like that. So it's just, I hundred percent agree with you all in your discussion about learning more, but I think there's multiple angles here. So Mr. Timian, I'm sorry.
I, no need to apologize, Your Honor. I manage a team of data scientists and data engineers. And I'm not asking you to appeal to authority, but with these things come sentiment analysis so we're able to better understand with the AI, you know, negative comments versus positive. And we can get really good general ideas. On top of that, and now, you know, during this presentation, I will one hundred percent ask, can we incorporate feedback from surveys, et cetera, that we put out as a city into the final dataset? Because at the end of the day, more data is just really what we want. We want to reach multiple audiences in as many ways as possible and not just get that four or five hundred. So I think it's definitely worthwhile to pursue.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
I mean, I'm all for the presentation, but I mean, just even like this customized insights development projects. I mean, like, their example here is people being opposed to the stormwater drainage utility. And, you know, the top one was improve budget management. What are the chances that those fifty-one people that said improve budget management have any idea of what the budget management of the city of the stormwater actually really is? It seems like a smart answer rather than I'm just opposed to high taxes or something like that. I mean, just this example here about things like this, where all of a sudden we're then putting a bunch of weight into something like this, but an example like that is, I mean, is Alderman Walden, no. They, they don't know, but it sounds like the smart thing because I just don't want to pay them more tax. Where, you know, unless they get in and then ask follow-up questions and they really understand it and say, okay, well, now that person's response is valid while others, you know, aren't. And then you're just getting into super surveys and I just, I've got some issue with, with getting.
Rejection. Slide, slide.
You have three other items.
Well, for executive session, I have an item, yes. And then the one, yes, Margaret?
Yes. As well? You have two items?
For now.
Minus miscellaneous, okay.
All right, so I'm just gonna jump on, jump on the broadband issue. I sent out an email to everybody today, wanted to keep you in the loop in terms of what's going on with the negotiations and the discussions. Clearly, the results are changed. The direction has changed. I put CTC on hold until I've had a chance to just advise the council what's, what's happened. And going forward, you know how the proposal was written. Council approved the RFP. They responded to the RFP. Three of the five wanted money, two of the five did not. One of the five that doesn't want money is not necessarily a part of the game anymore. It's not a part of the game. And one that wanted no money is still in the game, but, you know, there's apples and oranges now. Because the apple is that, you know, one of them wants to put everything in the air, the oranges, the other three don't. And that's the reason there's a difference between, between the proposals. To put it in the ground is gonna cost money. It's gonna cost the city money. There's no way around it, you know, for companies, you know, X, Y, and Z. You know, for company S, they're saying they're gonna do it like they did for everybody else for free. But with caveats, which I laid out. So, you know, just laying that out there going forward, you know, if we're going to require everything to be buried, then I think the other firm is probably going to want to revise their proposal. I would think they're gonna come back and say, hey, we're gonna revise it. If I reach out to the other three and say, oh, you can, you know, go either way, they're gonna say, oh, then we want to revise our proposal. So it's, it's, it's going to cause, you know, delay. I mean, we're not going to get this project started this summer like we had planned, given where we're at right now. And that is my concern because the number one goal is to get the services up and running to the residents. So I'm here to answer any questions anybody might have.
Mr. Schmidt and Mr. O'Brien?
I think I actually have a question for Margaret. Given what our ordinance currently is, do we even have a path forward to approve a contract with entirely above-ground placement?
No. But given that.
Unless you issue a waiver.
Isn't this what Mr. Went was responding to Mr. Mercedes about earlier with regard to we, we can have flexibility? Right?
Well.
Is that, am I?
Yes, can you?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think that we've got two issues. I mean, moving forward on what we do, we absolutely do have flexibility. I think our problem, and this is maybe what Margaret is getting to, is the RFP had certain parameters that we said, hey, these are the rules that you're supposed to submit under. So those are, from my standpoint, I don't want to put words in Margaret's mouth, but that's my understanding. So his concern of if somebody comes along or we're not gonna have competition or whatever, that's a different animal that we've got lots of flexibility with. When we've got an RFP that had been issued and under with certain rules, then changing it midstream, that becomes, I think, problematic.
Got it. Other hands?
So, I mean, I guess my question to Bob is what, is there anything that we can do flexibility-wise? Because we don't want to put this thing, I don't want to put this thing personally off any more than humanly possible.
Quick. You know, the difficulty, I think, the difficulty I think that we find ourselves in is that all around us, it went in, Metronet went in and they went in up in the air and some places they went in the ground, wherever they, they needed to, right? You know, and nobody paid. They paid. So in our situation, we had two vendors that said, you don't have to pay. One said, we'll go underground, but things changed in their world and they pulled, they withdrew, you know? And the other one is still out there waiting to see what we're going to do. Because the last time that we gave direction to CTC, it was go back and negotiate with Metronet, go back and negotiate with Windstream, right? And they didn't just that. And in the process of doing all of that, then came the, the email that said, you know, our board, well, we're withdrawing. We basically were out, all right? So they pulled. So the difficulty now going forward is, is that, you know, if we do go forward with, I don't care whether it's MediaCom, AT&amp;T, or, or Genesee, they all ask for money, which I detailed in the email, right? So then we're gonna have to answer the question, how are we gonna finance it, right? We're gonna have to fund it somehow. And we did not budget any of those figures that you saw that were presented in those proposals. We budgeted a little bit of the ARPA dollars for that, but we did not budget that kind of money. So we have to, Carol and I have to figure out how we're gonna finance it, right? How do we do it? If we want to go underground, which is the preferred methodology in Moline, you know, then are we gonna go? Then who do we go with? Which then means we have to tell CTC to actually negotiate with the other three, other three providers, which they have not done yet, you know, to get some feedback as to what is the best deal that they can negotiate for us.
So you're, you're asking for direction on, from the council on what to tell CTC?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Went?
So along those lines, if we gave direction to CTC to say, hey, go back and talk to the. All of them. To, to all of them and negotiate with them and say, hey, we have indicated that we're keeping our Chapter Six the way it is. We are not going to allow a competitor to come in and just to hang lines or whatever and start to negotiate from that standpoint. If one of those said, oh, if that's the case, then you only have to give me a million bucks or whatever. I mean, we can negotiate, that's part of that, that, that process, right?
Right.
On the other side of the thing, I mean, if vendors want to meet our right-of-way ordinance, they don't have to talk to us at all. They can just go in and start to installing, right? And provide service to people.
Federal law allows them to.
Yeah, so, I mean, so, so the, the, I know we're going through this RFP and all those things, but we gotta remember, I mean, anybody can come in, as long as they're meeting our ordinance and supply service, they don't have to sign a franchise agreement with us to do that. They can just come in and do it. But, so I guess what I would suggest is that we have CTC go back to all of them and say, hey, this is what we've discussed, that we're sticking to our ordinance, that we're not going to have the hanging to it, and then see what that negotiation, including telling that to Windstream, and see what the response is.
Any, yes, Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Moyer?
I'm very torn in this situation, but I do think that there's, there's another opportunity or another option, which is to say that for this project, I think there has been a long-term need and desire for this project. And that when we look at the cost to the city of Moline and how that's going to play out, that it may be a point where we have to say that we, we are more interested in receiving the product we are interested in than keeping all those lines underground. And to do that, if I'm understanding correctly, the only option to do that would be then to approach these other vendors to allow them to change their proposals. Is that, is that a legal option first?
proposals. Is that, is that a legal option first? Okay, because I think that's the other option, because I'd like to see us moving forward in one of those two for sure, where the balance is cost, lower cost and expediency versus adhering to that ordinance. And I think waiving it for this one-time, larger-scale project makes sense to bring that here at a huge cost savings to citizens. And then leaving intact the ordinance moving forward. Like you said, anyone who wants to follow that ordinance can push forward. So, that is kind of where my head is at, and I'm leaning, I think, a little toward waiving it on this project to allow aerial installation.
What, Moyer was next, yes, thank you.
So, and I understand your point. I think if we go back to Windstream, for instance, in the situation, to show that we're actually gonna enforce our ordinances and so forth, I think maybe the reason they got out was they felt like there was unfair competition or something, at least find out what the situation was and what they might need to go forward.
I spoke with the Vice President of Government Affairs today. I mean, I didn't depend upon just CTC to tell me what they told them. I actually reached out and spoke to them, because it was the gentleman who reached out to me before we even put the RFP on the street and expressed an interest. And things were going exceptionally well. I mean, things were going really well. But when they kicked it up to the, you know, the Board of Directors for Windstream, they're the ones that actually pulled it. They're the ones that said, no.
No reason?
And the reason was economics. Is it just the economics of the deal, the economics of the times, the outlook, you know, their outlook, he says, you know, they kicked it back. The people who actually prepared the proposal, you know, and that were in communication with CTC, they thought it was a done deal. They were thrilled. So, when it, when it got kicked up, that's when it got kicked out. So, it was a Board of Directors decision, it was not any one individual. So, it happened in their boardroom.
Mr. Went.
Yeah, and I understand where you're coming from, but I think the prudent thing would be step one, have CTC go back to the other ones, see the negotiation, see what we can come back with. And if that's a dead end, then we always have the option to just say, hey, no mas, do whatever the heck you wanna do. I won't support it, but I think doing that before you have exhausted and had those conversations is a mistake. So, I mean, so what I would do is, was have that, see what their response from the other vendor saying, hey, we're going to, our plan is right now that we're going to enforce ours, that this is what we're gonna do, let's negotiate, maybe some of that gets into a range that we feel comfortable with. If not, then at that point, we've got...
I saw Waldron's in and then Williams.
Mine's quick. I agree completely with Alderman Schmidt.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with Alderman Went. I think that if we back off now, after we held to our guns to wanna go underground, we waited this long, go through this whole process, to be bullied in by one company and to just step back from going underground and give them a little bit more room, we're gonna find ourselves when they start to install it, they're gonna probably back off again with another one of our priorities, which is to give it to everybody within the city, because we're weak, we don't show backbone, we're not united, to do the very thing we put out there that we wanted everyone to meet. They're playing the long game, and they're playing us. And if we can't see that, then we deserve what we get, and our citizens, that will have pockets within the city of Moline that won't receive this service because we didn't do our job.
Anyone else? Mr. Masiis?
I do like that, Sondra. I would just be more comfortable, like, starting, if we were to start with the, basically, we're sticking to our guns, see what's next, a timeline, a very definite timeline, because then we can say, okay, we're moving on to the next.
Two weeks.
Yeah, and I'm comfortable with that, starting this way, and then I'm supportive of starting just strong and then being flexible.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt, then Mr. Timian.
I'm glad Alderman Waldron agrees with me. I haven't decided if I agree with myself.
Last time was eight to one, or seven to one.
I mean, to the point of, yes, moving quickly and going through that, I do agree too, where part of going through that process is not me saying we should go with the only vendor that's going aerial, but it is to go back and say, what if it went, allowed an aerial option to those other vendors?
That would change.
Because I think it would be premature to say, it'd be premature at this time to say, I think the city could enter in an agreement with MetroNet until certain things are resolved. And I think that's gonna be something we're gonna run into as that's an ongoing process, but, and that's, that to me is especially where it says, like, well, why looking at, is there another option that gets us there? And making sure we stay within the rules. But I'm fine with going back with that, that first piece of information, and then, you know, because I don't know that I think it's a high probability of success, but I don't see a problem in trying for a couple of weeks. That's, that's...
Mr. Timian.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to join the island of Alderman Schmidt.
Got a little bit bigger.
A little bit bigger. I just, I wanna point out, while I appreciate the desire not to be bullied, I think we also need to make sure we're not being bullheaded about things, and we need to have a little bit of flexibility. I came up with that.
You trademarked that?
Good shirt.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we, do we need to get a show of hands, or how do you wanna give direction to...
We get two directions.
Yeah, we have two directions, so we probably need to make a vote on some...
I'll move that we give direction for a couple of weeks, two weeks, or whatever the next meeting is, to get back to us, that with the approach that we are going to stick with our guns and negotiate with...
The rest of them.
The rest of them, including Windstream, and let them know and see what the response is, and then come back, report back, and then we'll make a decision from there.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman and Moyer. Discussion. Mr. Schmidt?
My only last is in conversation about negotiating with Windstream being that that could change a variable of their aerial versus underground, too. I don't remember...
Well, if we change our mind, we can tell them that, too.
Well, I don't remember what their summary was and how much of theirs was aerial versus...
Well, they were a hundred percent.
They were all...
They were a hundred percent, unless they ran into a problem with bedrock or water or water.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Then they have to go up, right? And the others were all underground, and with a price tag.
Then that creates no problem for us.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Two nays.
Two nays.
We lost Schmidt, the island got real small.
That motion passed. Please, clarify for the nays. The nays, Timian and Waldron.
I'll be on the phone in the morning with CTC and Adam Simon.
Yes, great. That's all for...
That's it for one session.
Minas Alarens, any staff, Minas Alarens, poof. Okay.
All right, so we have two issues. One is we're seeking clarification on direction from our roundtable with regard to the complete streets. Well, I'm gonna just run it a little bit. So, we have the, of course, there are complete streets, which are led us to other clarifications on Chapter 2.
All right, so, on the clarification of the item from the June 14th roundtable, again, these both concern Chapter 2, that was on for first reading tonight, and under, I'll just read the actual motion. Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Timian, moved to launch development of a multimodal transportation system in complete streets, including codification and bike waste plan in fiscal year 2022. Discussion had, VDS indicated that 750,000 in unrestricted ARPA funds have been allocated in fiscal years 2022 to 2024. There is a total of 1.5 million available. Motion passed unanimously. So, on that motion and council direction, we're looking for clarification as to whether council wanted the Complete Streets Committee to be codified, the policy to be codified, both to be codified or neither to be codified. Staff's recommendation is to not codify it because it is an ad hoc working committee like the Special Events Committee and the FASAD and NPC, and also the Traffic Committee. But we're looking for clarification on that, so we know.
Mr. Went.
As the person who made the motion, I think there's a couple of things. It was to codify the Complete Streets Committee. The other was the combination of the Bike Waste Plan and the Multimodal and use that money and start spending it now and getting that rolling, not waiting. But as far as the codification, it is absolutely the codification. That's the whole point. We don't want it to be an ad hoc committee anymore, that we want it like the Traffic Committee that is in Chapter 2. We want a Complete Streets Committee that is there, it's within the code, it's going to survive, it's not, it is going to have regular meetings. I don't even remember the last time we had a meeting. I mean, those are the sorts of things where we want to have it in there, codified, so that it moves forward, and it doesn't, you know, the calling it an ad hoc, staff is treating it like an ad hoc, and it's not moving forward. And so, that's why we want it codified. And we do have a policy that we had adopted, and I think that the tenants of that should be included within that Complete Streets that, you know, govern kind of what the purpose and those sorts of things within the code, much like the other commissions or whatever.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Just to add to that, one of the values of codifying the committee is that appointed positions with some influence, right now, members of the committee, Alderman included, really have no authority about direction. It's all just kind of, we meet together, share ideas, and then engineering can still do whatever they want. This puts a little bit more authority behind the members of the committee. Also, as politics change, a mayor in 10 years might decide this is not valuable, and it can just be eliminated outright. So, this kind of preserves the safety of multimodal ongoing and then going forward.
Yes, Mr. Moore?
I just wanna agree. It's, I was on that committee for a year. It's an important committee. It does really important work, I think. The, having it codified not only does all of that, but it also creates the spot on our website where you're gonna see the agenda, you're gonna get to see the minutes. So, there'll be some formality to that. I just, I would wanna say I'm in favor of the codifying as well.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? We don't have a motion on the floor.
No.
We're just giving direction.
I think clarification is...
That's right.
So, then on that same field, the second one was Traffic Committee. When we did the numerous revisions to Chapter 2, we had intended to remove the Traffic Committee from the chapter for the same reason as it's ad hoc, like the Special Events and FASAD and NPC. So, that was the second one that we're looking for direction.
Mr. Went.
Yeah, at one point, because I mentioned that as an example, if you guys feel that the Traffic Committee should become ad hoc, because it is, it's just a couple of staff members that get together, and, I mean, if there's no input from elected officials or the public or anything, that's understandable. But, so maybe it's better that it's within the Commissions and that section. If you're just trying to organize it, that's understandable. If you're gonna take that section out, then with the other commissions is probably, makes the most sense.
Mr. Schmidt?
So, if the Traffic Committee is removed, then it would no longer be subject to having the agenda and minutes? Okay, then I'm opposed.
I'm opposed. But that's a different thing. I don't disagree with you, but that's gonna be their recommendation, I think. Has it made it into the, what you published with us for?
Chapter 2.
Chapter 2? I didn't see it removed.
It's still in there. We had intended to remove it, so I was mentioning it tonight in case there's...
So, so the consensus of this council is to not remove it? Is that the direction you're giving to her?
That's certainly what I'm...
Is there any objection to that?
And contrary to Alderman Went's opinion, we got a lot of public input on the Traffic Engineering Committee, to include people showing up and yelling at us.
No, but I'm saying that anybody who's making a decision is just staff. And so, I agree with you and to Alderman Schmidt, I prefer that it being published and so people can see and get involved a hundred percent, so...
Thank you.
And I think it's totally fine if we have one that functions a little differently. That's because its role is different, but that, that maintaining of a record and a public notice of meetings, I think is a really important function of that committee.
Thank you.
You don't want those here.
Okay.
You think these are dead long. You don't want these here.
Ms. Saunders, do you have anything else?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another item from staff? Yes. Chief, go.
Yes.
Or Tony. Okay, what? It's coming from everywhere tonight.
Council approved Project 1371 earlier in the year. It's a sewer by press project to convey wastewater from John Deere Road. I think there was an email sent out yesterday, making you aware that we've encountered a problem and will be bringing a change order to council on the next council meeting, seeking approval of a change on the order of $180,000. The purchasing code does not allow staff to approve that magnitude of a change, so we'll be bringing that back to you on the 12th.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Would that also include repaving that road there, or is this...
The change, the current project as designed would, was gonna repave half the road. This change would result in curb-to-curb replacement of that stretch of road.
Okay, so, that'd probably be a good thing for Complete Streets to then look at.
And Tony, is it true that this project may result in...
Yeah, so you should be aware also that the road will remain closed, that section of road will remain closed, and likely the project will not be completed before the school opens again due to this, the result of this change.
Can we make emergency decision on this and allow Tony to go forward with a change order?
There is nothing in the open meetings that actually allows for this. I think because there's no exception, it's not posted.
Could we do a special meeting?
We can have a special meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be willing to come in 48 hours.
Right, that actually is an option now. If you give him some direction tonight and that project got started, and then on the 12th, it was...
Yeah, yeah.
Back over.
Or tee it up and let's have a meeting on Thursday.
So, actions taken that are not in conformity with the open meetings can be ratified at the next meeting. It's just very disagreeing. So, I've been trying to think, probably, you know, conform with the law, but get the project through. So, you write a special meeting with so that, or direction, and then...
Ratification.
Bring the change order on the 12th and just let the project proceed.
Ratifying Tony's actions.
Yeah, I do, yeah. Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Went?
I say that we, we give him direction, start moving, and we set, can everybody make 8 o'clock, or can enough of us make 8 o'clock on Friday morning?
No.
Do we, just we need a quorum to be able to vote on it, right?
Yeah, we can move our week-by-weekly with Alex Elias.
Oh, we're gonna cancel that, hell, I think.
Okay. Yeah, it's, yeah, how many people, can I get a show of hands for how many people could be here at 8:00 AM Friday?
I could.
Oh, yeah, we're good. Okay, so, we're giving you direction to get moving, and we'll have a special meeting on Friday morning at 8:00 AM for this topic.
We just have to post it first thing in the morning.
Yes.
Is it 48 hours that we need?
No, you got today. You get to Wednesday.
So, Wednesday, we have to post it first thing Wednesday morning.
Gotta be posted first thing tomorrow morning.
You need to post it first thing, or tonight.
Or tonight.
Apparently, I'm not getting Matthew's...
Yeah, the clerk will take care of that probably before she leaves. Yeah, the clerk will take care of that probably before she leaves.
Or, or if she's... If that's gonna be a problem, do you...
Saturday noon?
No, no, it's fine, she'll be fine. Thank you. All right, what, is this the last staff item?
Well, I'm so thankful that Tony went before me because, uh, my problem pales into the, because his problem. It made it much easier for, paved the way. Uh, so I come here, uh, with my tail between my legs here, have a little bit of a problem with our MDT, uh, replacement program that we ran by you back in March. We do have the money available for, for this, to solve this problem, so that's the good news. But to refresh your memory, back in March 29th, at the Committee of the Whole, we presented to you this problem of all of our MDTs needing to be replaced. IT had budgeted over a three-year period. You authorized the purchase of 35 ruggedized tablets for the police vehicles. On that same night in the council meeting, you approved Resolution 1055-2022, giving Sarah Mark, the fleet coordinator, air manager, authorization to purchase components to retrofit 22 police vehicles to accept those tablets. And that was already a budgeted item, she had that already worked in that. And we have 10 other vehicles that are being built, so that project was already specked in the bill. Two days ago, the Federal Signal team showed up to install it. We have everything, they showed up to install it, they said, "Oh, where are these other two pieces?" Somehow, we missed these pieces. In essence, uh, I'll take responsibility for it as the proj, you know, being overseeing the project. Some miscommunication between IT Fleet and Federal Signal on the, on the, uh, itemized sheet. Federal Signal assumed that the, um, the Harris, uh, there's a component that attaches the, the docking station and the laptop together, VGA HDMI, uh, pass-through antenna docking component at $492 per vehicle, and then a power adapter. Both of those are actually, come from Dell. That was not on the Dell invoice, uh, that was approved back in, uh, at the Cow for IT. Carol says we have the money in IT reserves, the total is, they're individual pieces. So, $10,592 for the power adapter, that's within our budgeting or purchasing authority, but the other one's $15,744 for the HAVUS piece. So, the total is, uh, $26,336. So, the, the items are in stock, they could be ordered. We seemingly have authority in the resolutions, but the dollar amount was wrong. So, we didn't want it to not be transparent with you, uh, of the project. So, I'm coming back to you to get consensus if you're okay with us. Similar to what you just did for Tony, is giving direction and move forward and then we'll bring it back for ratification. Since it's, I mean, the project's already been through you, it's just we missed these pieces.
Would you like it to be on the Friday meeting then?
Oh, you could.
Hey, do it.
Okay. Do we have thumbs up from all of us?
We'll have something to do while we eat breakfast.
You're on the same island as I am.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything else?
Sorry, Janine.
Okay.
We're all bringing breakfast for Janine on Friday.
I'm not here Friday.
All right.
Yep, I'm here Friday.
Okay, great. So, that concludes miscellaneous business, if you can believe it. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I believe we have executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation, 5 ILCS 120/2C11, appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, 5 ILCS 120/2C1, and discussion relating to the purchase, sale, or deli-